West Rhode Island.
Oh, okay, it sounded. It had the correct name style for that part of the state. I'm like, sounds coastal, probably southern. How are you today, man?
Good.
Oh, all right, thank you. Let me call up the.
Did we hear anything from Glenn? I'm surprised he's usually very punctual.
Yeah, do we know if Mr. McLeod is attending tonight?
I haven't heard from him.
Well, we'll get started, it's time and find out. Okay, I'll get that. Good evening, everybody, and welcome to this, our March 10th, 2025 meeting of the Lunenburg Planning Board. It, uh, we are here at beautiful Town Hall in the upstairs meeting room. If you are watching us on the television and want to participate in tonight's meeting, you can either use the Zoom link found on the agenda, and you can get the agenda on the town website, or you can drive on down to Town Hall. The meeting is being recorded like we do every week, and I think that's all we need to say. If there's someone who wants to lead us in the pledge, we can do so.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic with which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
All right, rock and roll, everybody. I hope you're enjoying our first dose of what feels like some real spring weather out there. I think I saw a little bit of green moss peeking through in my yard, so I'm getting a little hopeful. Um, I'm sure it's just fall-spring and we'll get another storm, because that's how life goes. Um, okay, we've called to order, public comment. Seeing no general public comment, as always, if you're in Zoom and you want to, and you want to comment during a public comment period, or otherwise, use that raise hand feature. We'll definitely get to you during public comment, and often get to you anyway, because we're relaxed. Great. Chair and directors' reports.
I have really nothing, good sir, in the interest of expediency, just.
My god, quick meeting, that would be, and I won't have. Okay, we will move on then, to the first item on our agenda is appointments. Mr. Scullbrini is here, looking to volunteer for the Master Plan Steering Committee. We have his form in the, in the SharePoint. And, Mr. Scullbrini, if you want to come up and say anything, you're welcome to.
I'm Anthony Scullbrini, or Tony Scullbrini, Five Valley Road, and I look forward to accepting the appointment and being a participant in the Master Plan Steering Committee. Um, I'm an engineer, and I like to say that engineers have great appreciation of plans, because that's how you successfully build things and get things done. So hopefully, I'll be appointed tonight, and I look forward to serving on the committee as quick as possible. Thank you.
Great, thank you, sir.
Any questions for me?
I have a couple of questions for our acting board chair for that, but otherwise, no, we'll call you back up if we do.
Actually, sorry, I do, really quickly, um, I didn't bring my notes with me today. You mentioned some other boards or groups that you were?
I'm the chair of the Architectural Preservation District Commission, and I also have been the ad hoc member, um, on the Lunenburg Municipal Building Design Committee.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
My only question is, I know we've done a little bit of rejiggering of that board, and I want to make sure we do have an open slot that we can put Mr. Scullbrini into.
Yes, we had somebody resign from the board, I cannot remember their name offhand, but we had a at-large position resign, so we do have an open position available.
Okay, great. So we do have an opening, we have, um, a volunteer who is well-versed in town government. Looking for discussion, comments, questions from the board?
I've worked with Mr. Scullbrini on the MBDC for a good amount of time now, probably well over a year. Uh, he's been a very active participant member, uh, he's very punctual, he's almost always there, um, he's not afraid to speak his mind, I very much appreciate his input, and, uh, I think he'd be a good addition to this, uh, what I expect to be a fairly short-lived group from here on.
Great, all right. Uh, nothing else, we would be, uh, the motion would just be to, a, a, a motion would be to approve Mr. Scullbrini for the open, for an open ad hoc, no, for an open at-large position on the, um, Master Plan Steering Committee.
Yes, so moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Bang-a-rang, thank you, sir. Phew, if we can keep up with that pace, it's gonna be a good night. Uh, next up, we're on to an A and R, an approval not required, for 255 Sunny Hill Road. Take it away.
Brian Marchetti, McCarty Engineering, uh, here on behalf of Stefan McSweeney, MN122 at Main LLC. This is the Sunny Hill parcel that we just received, um, approval from the board for stormwater permit, so Lot 1. So, a year or so ago, we had this parcel subdivided into five lots, um, so we're reconfiguring that now to rework the lots on Sunny Hill. So we came back and we did get approval, uh, just in the last couple of weeks, for Lot 1. So, this takes the parcel and divides it into, um, the, the main parcel, which is, uh, the main body, Lot 1, 2, and 3. 3 is the one on Lemmister Road, um, we're not doing anything with that, and we're not doing anything with the rest of Lot 2, but they're gonna remain as-is, and we'll be back after Lot 1 here to continue to break apart Lot 2 here, so.
And, uh, currently, Lot 1, 2, and 3 are all one parcel, or is Lot 1?
No, it was, they're currently, it's, they're five parcels.
Oh, okay.
What was approved was the five that was subdivided a year ago.
Right, okay.
So we're reconfiguring just the land right here, right now, on Sunny Hill. So we're starting with Lot 1, we're gonna come back and do another, uh, once we start designing that, so.
Yep, and again, the, the results are your business, because it's, it's fine, we just ask you to check with the board of health, you have, great.
Yep, and we did, the board of health submitted their.
Yep.
Approval of this as well.
As always, the, the decision that doesn't factor into our decision-making, we just wanna make sure people don't create their own issues. All right, questions from the board?
I've already made my piece with this, they're doing the same thing that they tried to do before.
Mm-hmm. Well, again, for an A and R, it's entirely just frontage, and, uh, really, it's accessibility and zoning. I see the lot squad size is 98, 221 square feet.
Yep.
175 feet of frontage on Sunny Hill. Okay, and Lot 3 does have frontage on Lemmister Road, got it?
Yep.
Super. In that case, if we, we could have a motion to endorse the A and R for 255 Sunny Hill If someone wanted to make that motion?
So moved.
A second.
Moved and seconded, any further discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No.
That was, okay, that was a no, all right, great. Approved, three to one, so you've got it.
Okay.
And do we have the, uh, mylar for this?
Yes.
Okay, and do you want to take the mylar with you today?
Please, yep.
Today is the 10th.
So, Mr. Riley, there's, there's no reason I have to sign that, is there, with, there's three signatures on it?
I'm sorry?
If there's three signatures on that plan, that's, that's adequate?
Yeah, that's fine.
There you go. I realize since I always travel with a backpack, uh, my laptop, Sharpies in there as well, so we're.
I've got a big pile of them back there now.
Oh, you can roll that.
Great, thank you. Okay, and that is the A and R for 255 Sunny Hill. Next up, we have two de minimis changes, we'll go in the order on the, um, agenda, so we'll do 494 Electric AV, and then 711 Mass AV.
Attorney of E.D. for the applicant, Mr. Anderson had a family issue tonight, from Hannigan, so he couldn't be here. They did submit a brief outline of what the de minimis change is. This is basically a canopy that connects, um, the new building, or sits in between the new building and the existing building. It's really designed for a wind weather shield, so it's just a minor site plan change.
Mm-hmm. And, um, for those following around, along at home, 494 Electric is also before us as part of another plan, but where that is, uh, taking a while, um, the applicant would also like to put in a cover that really affects a previous, um, a previous application, a previous application we approved for the secondary building a couple of years ago. So that's here before us tonight as a de minimis change. And, um, what is, we do these, but just infrequently enough, um, Chris, what is our, in the end, we're voting on, is it to approve the de minimis change if we wish, is it to, uh, acknowledge, like, what's the motions?
I would say you motion to approve the de minimis change as proposed.
Okay.
You wouldn't normally condition a de minimis change.
Yep, um, great.
If I may, I thought we had to confirm that we did agree that it was a de minimis change, in fact, in one motion, and second, and roll call vote, and then, no? We don't have?
I don't know, I wasn't here, I don't know what you did, but I can tell you, in our regs, it mentions a de minimis change in, in the operating procedures, and then in the bylaw mentions modifications, so it's somewhat contradictory and confusing. I don't want to hold up the applicant here.
No.
With a technical argument, I will just tell you that de minimis changes are usually one of, a list of things that are in the standard operating procedures.
Mm-hmm.
But then there's that catch-all phrase, including but not limited to, but not limited to, and that allows you to call this de minimis change if the, the board so chooses.
Okay.
And then you would approve it without conditions, generally.
Great, and, uh, I don't have a problem doing that as two separate votes, to see if it is a de minimis, and then if we will approve it. I'm, I'm comfortable with that, if we want to cover our bases, that's fine. I mean, we have everything here. Questions from the board? Now, is my understanding that this is already, I mean, this was up briefly onsite, taken down at the building commissioner's request?
Correct.
Because it needs to be approved by the board, but that the building commissioner otherwise had no issues with the canopy, other than it hasn't been, now, that doesn't affect whether or not we approve it, but, directly, but there's no, the building commissioner was not like that, that is something that's bad for some building code reason or something?
Mr. Chairman, as part of the application, there's a fully, uh, you know, outlined, uh, schematic by Mackenzie Engineering, so my understanding is, the building commissioner was okay with that engineering, so.
Yeah, no comments in the open gov on this?
Yeah, I looked at the portal, I didn't see any comments.
Was that a tongue-click of question, or?
No.
Okay. All right, um, I guess the first thing to do would be to see if we determine this a de minimis change.
I do have a question.
Oh, please.
So, the canopy, the proposed canopy only touches the new building, not the existing larger building?
It's shown, as it, as you see it, as the way it was designed, there's a space between the existing building and the canopy, and then the canopy will be faced against the rear, the backside door of the new building.
Okay.
And that's, I understand that's a design that was agreed upon.
All right. So, with no other questions, um, the first question is, do we find this to be a de minimis change? Um, I mean, being transparent, I'm, I do think that, but I'm the one who made a suggestion that this is one way to pursue it, and I wouldn't have done that if I felt that was flagrantly, that I felt that was incorrect, but I'm one of four voices up here tonight.
I think that was the appropriate decision, and I, I would agree that this is de minimis change.
All right. So, let's have, uh, we're just gonna do a, this is not, uh, a motion, this is just determining if we find it to be a de minimis change, so I'll have a vote for it, but this isn't, is that acceptable, does that work?
Yeah.
Okay, great. So, uh, all in favor that this is a de minimis change? Uh, yeah?
Aye.
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 Okay, great. So, now, do we wish to approve the de minimis change? The, um, motion could be to approve the de minimis change as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great. All set?
Great, thank you.
Yep, thank you.
So then what happens, Mr. Chair, is the standard conditions that were part of the original permit apply to this as well?
Yes.
Comes part of the original.
Great, perfect. We got that set. Next up, we have a de minimis change for 711 Mass AV, um, and this is those duplexes over, kind of in the vague vicinity of Sealy Automotive, right? No?
I'm gonna queue this up for the board, if I may, Mr. Chair.
Please.
So, why is this before you? Uh, we were contacted by the property owner, the developer, said they'd like to, um, schedule a closing for a couple of the units, so that, that far along, and that would require that a certain level of completion had occurred on most of the site, that all the infrastructure, everything that you required and approved up to those units has been installed. And how do you do that? Well, you ask for an as-built plan, a, a plan of what's actually out there on the ground right now. So we did that, and noticed some minor, I would call them minor discrepancies in a variety of ways, and the applicant's here, uh, to explain those and, and seek your review and approval, but, uh, they were enough that, uh, we felt it should come back to the board for your review.
All right, thank you.
Dan Shan with Haley Ward. Um, so like Chris said, previously mentioned, absolutely true. Um, so what I tried to do here on the plan, I highlighted and read what the proposed changes would be, um, ultimately just giving you guys a brief overview of essentially what happened during construction. The foundations were set a few inches lower, so that had to adjust some grading, just to make sure things were still drained to where they were supposed to be, or originally intended, um, as well as just changing some of the invert elevations, these are just construction invert elevations where they are as existing. Um, as part of this, um, one of the other things we need to do is address some of the drainage concerns, where the outlets for the basins were placed a bit lower, we are actually gonna be putting in some reducers, and actually for the 12-inch that's out there, putting in a riser pipe. Again, this is just to make sure everything still follows the original design intent. We had noticed that when things were set a little bit lower, that didn't seem to be the case. So, that is what we're here for today, I'd be more than happy to answer the questions. Um, full disclosure as well, transparency, the building commissioner did make some comments on this, uh, one of them being on the northeastern side, where that riprap slope kind of got extended out a bit further, it encroaches onto snow storage, there's plenty of snow storage on the site, we could fit it as needed, and the other, um, thing was for the grading easement, shown on the abutting property, there is an as-built retaining wall, or stone wall, um, so, those were his two comments, we could show them if you would prefer, but quite frankly, they are on the as-built plans, like Chris had mentioned, but entirely up to you guys. That was really it.
My, I have one question, and it's based on the snow storage.
Sure.
Um, which is, oh, and this is, so, is it unsafe or bad for snow storage to overlap with, I understand there's other locations for snow storage?
Yep.
But, is it detrimental to the overall property, I mean, does it ruin things or something, if snow is stored at, on top of the sloped riprap wall?
Um, from a detrimental standpoint, no, I don't think so. Um, I think where the building commissioner's comment was really dictated towards was, because we had the recent storm event, he was just noting that the pile couldn't be as large as it was, or at least shown on the plans.
So there still can be snow storage there, I was only thinking if we have to have that removed to.
Yep.
Match everything, that's, okay.
I think it was more of a quantity issue, you just couldn't push it over with like a skid steer or something like that.
All right. Questions from the board?
Excuse me, I have a question on the, um, the proximity of, uh, Unit 8 to that riprap wall, the armored wall, whatever, how, how far is that? Basically, can you fit a plow through there to push the snow between the building and the wall? And if not, then it's not really usable storage.
Right, I would say it's probably very tight, um, I honestly don't know that number offhand, I could get that for you, um, but I would say, based on what the building commissioner has seen there now, um, I would say that there's not enough room to push with the plow all the way through. Hope that answers your question.
It does, thank you.
Other questions from the board? Comments, et cetera? Um, okay.
So, Mr. Chair, for the record, if I may?
Yes.
I'm way in here. What I worry about when I see this kind of thing is the impact on the things below ground, the stormwater, uh, infrastructure and design.
Yep.
Can you run through a little bit about how there's minimal impact here, if that's what you believe to be the case?
Yeah, absolutely.
That's most what I'm worried about.
Yep, um, so, I mean, I'd say everything was constructed within construction tolerance, um, with pipes being a bit lower, does give you a bit more cover, so, from a perspective of things getting crushed, or something like that, I wouldn't see that being an issue. The reason for the stormwater basin changes, um, we're just mainly just to make sure that we're still mitigating all those, um, same procedures, for example, uh, peak rate attenuation, volumes, and things of that nature. So from a, um, subsurface, if you're worried more so about, I guess, um, the lifespan of everything, I'd say everything's within the same ballpark.
Worried about whether it's, everything is going to work.
Yep.
Effectively as, as required and proved previously.
Yes, I do believe that everything will be up to.
Do we have any sort of quantification of that, any, anything you can provide us?
Yeah, we could provide like.
I'm written documentation that this is how the design has changed a little bit, and this is why it still meets the requirements of what was previously approved.
Sure, so something like a engineer certification, or something of that nature?
Yes.
Absolutely.
I'd like to take that a little further, I mean, the drainage calculations were based on, um, specific pipe sizes and slopes and diameters, and, and you're adding, you're reducing it from 12 to 8 inches for an outfall, uh, you're adding a 90-degree elbow, apparently?
Yep, that's true.
So these are all potential blockages and, and restrictive flows, so I'd just like to make sure that it doesn't restrict it so much that in the 25-year storm, you've got ponding in your driveway?
Yep, oh, absolutely, we did run those stormwater calculations, be more than happy to provide that to the board as well.
You did, okay.
Yep, I didn't provide it as part of this package, just for, again, full transparency, but we can do that for you with that engineer certification if that's amenable.
No, they've been done, that's my concern.
Yep.
Just to make sure.
Great.
Am I allowed to go down there?
I can bring it closer to you if you like.
All right, I just, just address Mr. Allison.
As described on the plan.
Okay. All right, so, it sounds like, uh, it, it sounds like I am hearing some concern that we'd like to see the calculations before moving forward on this, is that correct?
Mr. Chair, I think, uh, what the applicant discussed is customary and acceptable, to have an engineer certification, their professional stand, you know, that they're, um, certifying that everything works properly as previously required.
So we wouldn't.
This would be the expectation.
Yeah, so we would need to, uh, it's not a public hearing, so we don't need to continue it to our next.
You don't need to continue it, that would be, and like I said, you don't normally condition a de minimis, but you can, you, you feel like additional information could have, or should have been submitted, you know, for your satisfaction, you just add that in the motion.
Oh, so we could, we could, we could add that in the motion, that once we have the engineer certificate?
Yeah, we're, you know, we're just kind of.
No, that's fine.
Taking care of business here, so normally you wouldn't, if the de minimis change was approved, it would be as approved as proposed, but there is a concern here, and we've got one or two ways to go here.
Yep.
We can find it's not, or I could recommend it's not a de minimis change, which kicks off a whole nother further review process.
Yeah.
To work with the applicant, and their being, I would say, agreeable.
Absolutely.
And agreeing with us that that need is there, that, um, they can go ahead and provide that, and that's a reasonable offer to rectify the concern, I would say.
Okay.
Can, can I ask, that, it, would it be out of, uh, out of, out of the scope to have it re-reviewed by our review engineer?
It would not if we saw serious concerns. Um, I don't, you know, see that right now, but I'm not an engineer, and, so if you needed that level of comfort or satisfaction, that, that you'd be certainly appropriate to require that.
I always, I always, always in favor, but again, I'm only one member, so.
I'm getting a nod from Ms. Reed as well, okay. So, if that's the feeling of the board, we can work with that, how would we put that into, would we put that into a motion, would we table this until after we got a response from the engine, uh, from Graves, how would we?
No, you can go ahead, and, uh, you'd have to do two things here, procedurally, one, require more peer review funds.
Mm-hmm.
A motion and vote to require from the applicant, I would say $1,000, based on what Mr. Walsh is, is giving us in terms of reports and peer review.
Okay.
And that, that should be sufficient for him to review this type of design. So, um, motion and vote to require $1,000 for the purpose of peer review for the stormwater design as, as amended.
Okay, um.
Do that motion first, and then you can decide on the de minimis vote, and, if you're requiring peer review, obviously you're requiring a condition that there be, uh, further review by our peer reviewer as to the adequacy of the design.
Okay, and the idea is we, we could queue that all up tonight if the board wishes?
Certainly.
Okay. Okay.
So, moved on the $1,000 to the review engineer?
Okay.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Great. And now, are we comfortable, if it comes back hunky...basically approving the safe, if it comes back hunky-dory from Graves, we're good, or?
I think if we approve that...if we approve the de minimis change with that condition, then we don't have the opportunity to question the response from the review engineer. I think that may be the case.
I think that would be correct, yeah.
So, I'd defer...I'd rather defer the...
Okay.
I mean, we can find it de minimis all we want, but we shouldn't necessarily approve the change, I would think.
Okay. And-
Or maybe, actually, maybe the review engineer wouldn't find it de minimis.
I don't know that they make that judgment.
They wouldn't, but they could comment on it.
Something that would...yes. No, I agree with that. If we're going to...I would have us wait till we know if it's de minimis. That would be my preference, or until we have the review engineer's response. So, we don't need a...so, it sounds like the board's going to prefer that we don't vote on this till we hear back from the review engineer.
I understand.
Now, we don't need a...we don't need a...to continue this, it's not a public hearing. How does that?
I would continue it as an agenda
Okay.
spending.
Great, okay.
Further review.
That's...all right. And is that just...that work for everybody here?
Sure.
Okay. Great. And can you come in at our next meeting in two weeks?
Yes.
And that would be the 24th. Okay.
So, I'll work with the peer review engineer to turn that around, make sure-
Love it.
We have the report, and we can go ahead and give them what they're asking for, 24.
Great. So, look for a motion to continue this to our meeting on the 24th, if we have to do a time certain, 6:05.
So, moved.
Yeah.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Beautiful. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay.
So, excuse me, I probably have about 10 more minutes before I need to go to caucus.
Oh, caucus is...I apologize about that.
No, that's all right. No, I suspect that's what...
Oh, yeah.
It's not even here.
Okay. Let's...totally lost my place in my notes. There we go. Boom. And now, we're on to our public hearings. And next up would be 494 Electric Avenue. This is a continuation of the ongoing, so we don't need to open a hearing.
Evening again, Attorney Evine for the applicant. As a procedural matter, Mr. Anderson sent over a vehicle turning review plan, but I think we just got loaded...I believe I loaded it in the portal. I think this is in relation to Fire Truck. I wasn't able to print it out in color because my staff had left by the time I was shot over, so I think that's one of the things the board was looking for in relation to reviewing the plan.
Did we have that in the...
I don't know that the updated one was on.
Okay.
All at right now.
Okay, thank you. So, we can give a quick look-see at that. Let's just get into our SharePoint drives. And while we're doing this, my understanding is the applicant sent everything over to Town Council.
Everything, quite a while ago.
And Town Council still has not responded.
With anything. So, to the board, I would say it's sort of time to fish a cup bait here on that. And I don't know how we oppose the applicant's position without any other basis to do so. So, it's a pleasure. How do you want to proceed there? But, question of why Town Council's not responding to a perfectly reasonable planning board request, it's an issue.
Mm-hmm.
So, if I may, I guess I'll just repeat what I said. The last meeting was that I can't imagine that this will be done in any less than one year to be adjudicated by land court. In one year, I would...that would be phenomenal turnaround for a land court, no?
What are we adjudicating?
The ownership of the road.
They don't need to adjudicate it.
If it wasn't a public way...
No, it is a public way.
It is a public way, so that's not even a valid...it's an incomplete application, then.
No, it's not. You're misconstruing what we've been trying to direct this board.
You're trying to direct this board.
Let me finish, sir.
We have a land use director for that.
Okay. Should I go through the chair, or should I go through the land use director?
We have a Town Council who has a pending request, and the board has relied on that, and we haven't received.
So, what's happened is, when this application came to us, Town Council said, basically, paraphrasing, yeah, this is for the board to look at and decide. We looked at it, have kind of kicked...like, we had our own questions about the road, sent it back to Town Council. Town Council has had it for a substantial...I mean, for weeks, has not responded. We don't kind of like it, but Town Council's initial response was not, "This is an incomplete application." His response was, "This is something for the planning board to decide." And when we've said that we need Town Council to give further review, Council was clear about what he wanted, and the applicant has provided it, and Town Council has not given us anything else to work with. It's a mess, and I don't like it, but I have trouble faulting the applicant right now in that the applicant has done what we've asked, and it is the town as an entity that is kind of that amorphous thing that's everyone who does business under being part of what the town does for business, hasn't been able to...has not put together a different opinion. To my understanding, our decision here is just about this. It isn't a...while our decision is predicated upon the nature of if the town did specific things, the specific steps for the road, we're not the ones saying the town does or doesn't have it. We're going with the data that we're given, and the only data we have is the town doesn't own the road. And we've asked for that to be verified, and we have not gotten a response.
Didn't you just say it is a public way?
Again.
I think that's what you said.
I did say that. The town has accepted it.
Okay.
All right?
So-
They never prop...let me finish, sir. They never properly took it. It's a legal anomaly.
That's fine.
As myself and your planner have discussed, this is not unusual. It does occur.
So, is it the entirety of Pierce Ave. that you're claiming is?
No. No. Just our frontage.
There are so many questions that I don't think that we are
In all due respect-
...able to answer.
In all due respect, we have done everything that's been asked. We hired an expert. Let me finish, sir.
Except for withdraw, until we have
I am not going to withdraw, sir.
At this point, as chair, I am going to pause this. We are going to have future discussion on this matter through the chair, because I understand there are differing passionate opinions. I get why. However, we're not going to talk over each other.
Fair enough. I apologize.
Nope. I get why everyone is frustrated, because I share the applicant's frustrations, and I share Mr. Allison's frustrations. This is frankly a mess. I'm not faulting anyone here for the fact it's a mess, myself. But, I'm a parent. Sometimes there are messages you have to clean up that aren't your fault. So, we are going to have discussion through the chair, which is more formal, not something we usually do, but I think we need that to be productive right now. Mr. Allison, if I may, would you like to delineate your specific concern so the applicant may respond?
I don't really have time. I think I've been very clear from the get-go that if this public way is no longer a public way, there are many, many, many more things that are more pressing to the community rather than permitting a business. I think that the residents that live on that road, the residents that use that road, the DPW and all the infrastructure that's in that road, if that road is not a public way, and if that road is not owned by the town, then the town has some responsibilities and obligations to the people that live on that road, the people in town that use that road, to figure out all those other things before we grant permission to do something that's already against our bylaw as it sits right now. If it's a public way, we don't allow parking on the opposite side of a public way for a business. That's it. That's all that I'm contending, and I do need to go.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It is always a challenge that Town Caucus is on a Monday night. Every year falls on planning board meetings. I do want to give you a chance to respond to those concerns.
I mean, I wish you could have stayed, because I will go over it again.
I appreciate that.
Sure.
It is on the video, is being recorded, and will be in the minutes.
That's great. So, I'll backtrack a little bit. We identified this as an issue when we first started the application. We hired attorney Joe Pellegrini, who has been researching titles for 42 years, right?
Mm-hmm.
And he came to determination that the town never took the road, right? That's a legal action in relation to a taking. Hold on, right?
I am going to ask a simple question.
Yep.
There's some legal terms here that I think
Sure.
are not the way we use them. So, things like the town took the road, I think that's something...that's just a term we need to define slightly
Right.
for this conversation.
So, a taking is done one of two ways. It's done by eminent domain, okay? Or it's voluntary. You deed it, right? So, the town didn't do a taking, they didn't do a formal action. There was votes. Those votes were never solidified and recorded the registry of deeds that said, "We took the road." There's nothing in the title that says the common owner, the gentleman who did the subdivision, deeded the road out of the chain of title. So, basically, the road sits there, right? I have in my file a certified list from your clerk that says the road was accepted by the town, right? That may or may not...maybe that didn't...shouldn't have happened, but it did. So, again, you've got this real legal anomaly. The town never took it, but they've accepted it. So, to answer his-
Can we define accepted, please?
Accepted means the town comes in and says, "We're accepting this road for maintenance, service, snow plowing, drainage, the whole thing," right? I got a certified list from your town clerk that says, "We've accepted the road."
Okay.
So, we're not trying to pull a fast one, because your bylaw does say you have to have everything on one lot. So, as a matter of law, a matter of law, we have everything on one lot, right? Couple statutes control here. Derelict fee statute says Mr. Mohammed couldn't block this road. He can't stop anybody from going up and down it. It's what the derelict fee statute's all about. The second aspect is, because the town accepted it, there's signage there. They painted a crosswalk. They plowed it. There's sewer in the road. They maintain that. The town is never going to stop that. They don't have a reason to. Right? So, in all fairness to the applicant, we're trying to get a project permitted by right because technically, under the law, he owns both sides, and your bylaw prohibits having parking on the opposite side of the road. I'm not going to get into the public way, because that's not what...that's technically not what your bylaw says.
I understand that.
Doesn't say that.
No, it does not.
Right. So, all we're trying to do is pigeonhole this a little bit to get an approval.
All right.
And then, the plan down the road would be, we have no problem. We'll grant the town a permanent easement over it. That solves all the problems.
And for...if we're a little bit of background for the other board members, for the public, I was really hoping we were going to be able to work with the applicant and just not even have to deal with the road thing and say, "What if we can put parking on the other...on a separate lot?" Right? And when we wrote...we were really trying to make ironclad parking by law when we rewrote that a few years ago, because we'd had so many problems in the past with parking in town. So, when we wrote it, we got real ironclad. Turns out, we got so ironclad that we don't have the ability to waive that requirement within our bylaw.
It's a zoning issue. It's a zoning issue.
Yeah.
You don't have the authority or jurisdiction to waive it.
Yeah. And zoning can only do dimensional, which is-
You don't have a use...well, it wouldn't even be a use issue, really.
Yeah. No, they're limiting what they can do.
Yep.
We're limited what we could do. So, the only way to do the park...frankly, I think this might be something we want to play with in the future. I don't know. Our long list of things to play with. But, our bylaw does require on the same lot. And it isn't...well, we would often interpret that as you can't be on the opposite side of a public way. Here's a situation where the evidence we have says this is one lot with a public way down the middle. Okay. And is everything I've said, does that...are we...am I saying the same thing you're saying, more or less?
I believe so.
Okay, great. Because if I'm...if I'm saying something and you don't agree, I want to hear that sooner rather than later to make sure we're speaking the same language.
We are.
Okay. All right. I think...I pumpkin real early, so I apologize about that.
I'm sorry.
Oh, sorry. That might not become a parlance. Pumpkin to turn into a pumpkin like Cinderella's stagecoach at midnight.
We're not anywhere near midnight, are we?
Yeah, no, no, we're not. I pumpkin early.
Time changed, but I didn't think I missed a minute.
Been going strong since about 5:00, so-
I got you. I hear.
No. So, I just want to make sure...I asked you for the explanation. You gave it. I responded. Did I cut you off, or did you give that whole explanation?
I think I gave a pretty full explanation.
Great. I want to make sure I didn't cut you off and forgot about that.
Sure.
Wonderful. Okay. So, I'm not looking to push things prematurely, but I want to make sure that we have our options together and connect accordingly. This needs a simple majority vote, correct? Or does this need-
Site plan review, so a simple majority.
Yes. Yes, okay. We don't need a super major...so, there are three members here. So, we do have the ability to take a vote tonight. Okay. That's what I was trying to-
You could, Mr. Chair. I would recommend not closing the hearing, because you're going to have to talk conditions with the applicant.
Mm-hmm.
You should probably keep the public hearing open to do so. Closing the public hearing will shut down any sort of further testimony or-
Okay. No, that makes...I'm just trying to figure out where we are.
All right. I believe...I went through the peer review letter before I got here. I think all those issues have been addressed by Mr. Anderson, I believe.
Yes, they have.
Yeah.
I'd agree with that.
Great.
But, we're going to perhaps get into a back-and-forth discussion about some special conditions. I don't have them identified yet.
Mm-hmm.
But, that discussion could take place, so that's why I'm recommending to the board that they keep the public hearing open. Otherwise, we go to the next meeting, we have a decision, you have no ability to say, "Wait a minute, I don't..."
So, do you have a draft decision? Have you started a draft decision?
Not entirely yet.
All right.
Not that I'm willing to share at this point, so.
So, let's guess as far as we can tonight, and so we can get within striking distance of something. Okay. Now, this is a public hearing. I do want to leave some room for the public to comment as well. But board, do we have comments or questions first before I go to the public, then I'll come back to us? All right. Okay. So, public comment. If you are, if you're on Zoom, go ahead and use that hand raise feature. If you're here in the room, feel free to let us know you want to speak.
Good evening. Mike Lovewell, 579 Reservoir Road. I'm kind of confused because Pierce Ave is a road, as far as I'm concerned, in Lunenburg. Now, if they're claiming they only own the frontage of that lot, who owns the rest of it?
I can give
Because that road, they've got frontage that goes all the way down. So, that's like almost that whole road.
So, I can give, I can give my understanding, and I want to see if that helps. And I'm going to welcome the applicant to tell me that I am giving, that they agree with my interpretation, or that they think I'm wrong. I've heard a lot of descriptions where people say, "Well, it's the town's road, but the soil underneath belongs to the applicant." First of all, what it really seems to be is people who have frontage on Pierce own more or less to the middle of the road. However, it is a town road. The town controls it. The town, and the town plows it, paves it, has all the right of way a town would have.
Sure.
But, whereas normally, you cannot have land on two sides of the road and call it one parcel, one unit of land. Because of the weird anomaly with how this went through, you can't hear that in practice, this should change, should, I'm going to say should because I am not a lawyer. I am not, my limit of knowledge is land use for the town, and I know enough to be dangerous. This should not impact residents on the road. The road should continue to operate as normal. And frankly, regardless of our decision tonight, I don't believe that changes any of this legal stuff we're talking about one way or another. If it turned out that these legally couldn't be parcels, then maybe we've made a decision that couldn't happen. But our decision doesn't change anything for other residents on the road. Does that reflect, is that, does that reflect your understanding?
Yes.
And I'm going to ask the applicant, does that reflect
I could just, I don't, Mr. Anderson didn't come, he doesn't have all the big plans.
But if you're going to speak, I do need you to speak at the microphone.
It's not the best plan, but
You can even, you can take it off the thing and bring it over.
No, I'd rather not. So, what I put up is one of the progress plans. So, initially, we own 494, which was, which was four pre-existing lots with a building on it. 494 has so much frontage, I'll just walk away for a minute. From electric Ave down to a point about here, okay? We then buy the lot across the street, right? So, again, I'll walk away for a minute. I'll try to speak as loud as I can. So, if you take this line, it comes across and it merges with this parcel over here. So, Pierce Ave over here, Pierce Ave comes here, we come across. We own the center line on this side. These folks own the center line on this side. You can see there's a dark line down the center of Pierce Ave. So, here's 494. That comes across, merges onto the parcel across the street, where the building and the parking is from here. That's the access road, right? So, then that's where our delineation as far as this parcel merging with this parcel would stop. These folks own the center line over here, and we own the center line from that point down. So, we don't own all of Pierce Ave. You're familiar with this. We only own
I'm very familiar with this.
Right. We only own the section of Pierce Ave that's on the corner that goes across onto the lot.
Then why wouldn't you own it all the way down to the
Because it's not the way the derelict fee statute works. Because with this description, okay, of the lot we bought, the 680 lot we bought, right, it only has so much frontage that merges with Mike's parcel across the street like this, okay? So, that's where we get these lots to connect all over the lot.
So, because they own it both sides, each side owns the center line. Maybe the notion of they own the land underneath, whether or not it's technically correct, is not a bad descriptor.
Okay, I understand. He made that clear
Yeah.
about that. But I do think if all those residents that were here at that first meeting knew that he does own Pierce Ave, I think you'd see a lot more neighbors here. Because I don't think that's actually in the application, is it?
You can't, you can't restrict a day access for people who have frontage on the same road down
It's a derelict fee statute. We can't, we can't stop anybody from using it.
So, the comment from the applicant's lawyer was that because of the derelict fee statute, we cannot restrict people from using the road who live on it, have frontage, et cetera.
Correct.
Just repeating, because you're not at the microphone, that's all.
Fair.
No worries.
Yeah, okay. Understand. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. And again, I want to be clear. The board is not determining, what we're not doing tonight, is determining the legal, all this legal stuff. We're not the decision makers on that. We get presented evidence, more, we get presented information. The applicant has presented information. We have asked town council, and, I mean, information that seems, that's traceable and reasonable. We have asked town council to verify or say it's wrong. Town council has not gotten back to us. At some point, we do have to, some point, we're the decision makers for this plan, not for the road, but for this plan. And at some point, we do have to decide. I want to welcome other public comment on the topic, either in the room or on Zoom. And if you're, again, if you're on Zoom, use that hand raise feature. See, no, please.
Hi, Ryan Stober. I own a property on Pierce Ave. I like the explanation he just gave because my first question was the access. The whole thing is very confusing. And I'm kind of annoyed with town council because they have one job, and it's the residents first. And how many weeks have you asked? It's been a while because
We have had many requests out periodically that seemed to have had a delayed response.
So, because their lack of communication and professionalism, that puts you in a predicament now?
I am, I am highly hesitant and not, not, not looking, this isn't like political wording. This isn't the thing where you say a bunch of things to say nothing. No. I'm really hesitant to say town council isn't being professional because the times I've worked with him in person and everything else has been so rough.
Me too, me too. Yeah. It's just, if we have due dates and they're showing up, it's kind of unfair to them. I don't want to keep showing up on Mondays, you know, it's, let's just kind of get the ball rolling. And if he hasn't spoken one word about it, it's, I mean, has he any kind of correspondence?
No. We spoke, we met with town, Mr. Riley and I met with town council month-ish
Yeah.
ago. Could have been three weeks, could have been, somewhere in that range. And town council said, "Okay, here's the information I need from the applicant." We said, "Great." They sent the, I think they sent it directly to council, or did you send it to Mr. Riley? Sent it to Mr. Riley. Mr. Riley sent it to town council. We have not heard a response. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. So, that's where we are. Yeah, there's unknown factors here.
Right, yeah.
But, I mean, because we also keep in mind, town council is not a town employee.
Correct.
Is contract, basically contracted with the town, so.
So, the town's still going to maintain it to 13, right?
Mr. Chair, if I may offer point of information.
Yeah.
I'm 100% certain, planner should know better than to say this, 100% certain that the town will continue to maintain the road as a public road, as any other public road in every way. So, I don't think you have
There's not going to be much change.
We're not going to change, though.
The applicant has said multiple times they are not looking to change anything, that effectively, this is their legal, that this is their legally allowed way
Sure.
to get parking across the road by happenstance because this happens to be features of, featured because these things happened with the history, legal history of Pierce Ave.
And that's when the entrance was talked about, like changing it prior, the prior meeting, like you didn't know how you're going to come about the slowdown lane and
That was all, that was just safety, that was like safety decisions by the board and everything. That was separate from the Pierce Ave. Separate from the legal discussion we're having about Pierce Ave, not separate from Pierce Ave itself because
It's convoluted. It really is.
Phew, this one's new.
I mean, I live in the other, I mean, I live down the road quite, but, you know, I do have concerns.
Yep.
Well, if you want to speak, I'm all here.
If you, I have a list from the town clerk, I have a certified
You got to say at the microphone because we have people I know.
But I, gladly, if you give me the email address, I'll email you.
Sure, yeah.
You know, I've got the certified list from your town clerk that shows Pierce Ave as an accepted street.
Yep.
So, to alleviate his concerns and to back up your planner, the town is not going to just say, "Oh, he owns it. We're not going to plow it." It's not where this is going.
It's an important distinction with a difference that the town voted, town meeting voted to accept this road regardless of whether it didn't legally take it, or assume ownership of it by deed or fee. Nonetheless, they voted to accept it, which means two things. It was built properly according to the definitive subdivision and the requirements of our subdivision controls, and, and B
Still
completed properly to the point where the town was willing to accept maintenance.
So, I might not be delighted.
And given we've been
Tells you, there's no, you know, when, when this was accepted by town meeting, it was a properly constructed road with everything that was required.
And we've continued to maintain it for about 100 years.
Yeah.
For scope. Well, we're talking about this. We're talking about
1902.
So, I'm sorry, 120 years. I underexagger, whatever you call, underexaggerating.
Is the road in good condition?
They paved it three years ago?
Yeah.
Four years ago, maybe?
All right.
It's
All the utilities in the road.
Towards the far end, it gets a little, you know, beat up, but
There's the old water building.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's pretty beat up.
See, here's the point of the discussion where I may say is the land use director, my recommendation to the board is to consider some off-site mitigation for improvements related to the impact of your project. But I'm not saying that.
I think we already, I think we already dealt with that as far as our parking.
Okay. Well, but this would commonly be discussion with special conditions that may follow. So, I'm just saying that's why we leave the public hearing open, not intending to recommend
Please don't.
conditions you contribute to any mitigation offsite because it's not identified. But nonetheless, these are the kind of things that the board does have the authority to require, and we're not doing that in this case.
Perfect.
So, the applicant's getting some good response from the town as well. We're appreciating your application investment. This isn't all a one-way road. We're just trying to come up with things to make it more difficult. This is, there's tons and tons of case law about this situ, about your situation and this situation. It is convoluted, but this is one of the simpler, I think, examples of absent any other indication or evidence to the contrary, that we should assume that the existing condition will continue, the town will maintain the road properly, and that they have the ability to use it as proposed in this application.
Okay.
Right.
Absent anything to the contrary.
Right.
And we don't have it.
There we go. I'm going to turn to the board. Mrs. Stober, sorry. You're good?
I'm good.
Okay, great. I didn't see other people jumping up for public comment. Again, if you do, just wave me down. Use your hand raise. I'm going to turn to the board. Look for your thoughts.
As far as the construction portion of it, I'm feeling better after our last meeting. Engineers smarter than myself have told me that my opinion was possibly incorrect.
More educated than us. I would hesitate to say smarter because I have come to, I have opinions about the brains up at this table, and I'm very lucky to have y'all here with me.
So, more educated in that particular field. My only hangup, and I understand the frustration of the board, of the planning department, of the applicant, I understand the frustration. It is difficult for me to be on a board where we have reached out for advice from legal and not gotten a response, and to say, "We're just going to move forward and forget what legal, you know, they haven't given us anything, so we can't really..." Well, they haven't given us anything, positive, negative, nothing. They've given us nothing. And to me, that's a non-response. That's not a, "Hey, I don't think anything is wrong. Go ahead and do it." My older brother was a corporate defense lawyer, so I've kind of grown up with, if it's in a lawyer's hands, you're not going to do anything until you get the lawyer's consent to do so. So, I do, I do find this process extremely difficult because of that. Again, that's nobody, that's on nobody, except for legal, our legal department not getting back to us. That's, that's kind of my holdup with this, with this process. Now, I have voted before at MRPC and MJTC meetings to approve with reservations. I don't know if that's something that the board can do, where we can approve something and say, "But we do have reservations, and if, you know, X, Y, and Z happens, then it might have to come back." I don't know how that works.
You have a explicit condition that this approval is subject to resolution of the legal matter and the ownership of the road.
Okay.
You could do that.
I feel like that might be a compromise, but I don't want to put that out there until we have the other two members who have been involved in this process sitting on the board with us.
I would not recommend closing the public hearing.
Yes, I agree with that. That's my two cents.
But the applicant needs closure.
Absolutely.
That, you know, the board, and absent the information that it sought, it needs to take the information it has and provide some kind of deliberation, decision.
So, yeah. Well, I have a couple of thoughts, but I want to hear from you, you too, Jim, if you have anything. I don't want to
I mean, it is really the same thing. As far as we have the capability to determine here, they have the right to do this. Absent of town council's response, it seems that that is just how things are at this point, that they have property rights going across the road, and that gives them the right to put the parking there. It's good to have understanding that the town will continue to maintain the road. Yeah, that's about all I have.
Can I tell you how much I hate the fact that I've spent months discussing this with people, and you just offhandedly gave the simplest, most easy-to-understand description that I've heard of this so far?
Sure.
Which is, yeah, they have property rights going across the road.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, like, sorry, that just, the thing that took me so much time to wrap my mind around is like so nicely
I've been here listening the whole time.
Yeah. And not that they have, not that they control the road, but they have property rights across the road. So, yeah, no, I like it. Okay. Now, I hear all this. I can also say, I'm in a mean I hear all this, I can also say, I mean, I have a meeting tomorrow that includes the town manager, so I am happy to, um, have a frank discussion regarding our concerns. And because we haven't gotten responses. It sounds like we don't, and can't really have a full decision ready tonight. But we could be discussing a direction, it, we, we think we're going to go. Again, without a vote, I, we can never commit, right? We're not committed till we're committed. But we can have a discussion about things like what special conditions would be, so that those can get put together into a decision, into a draft decision before the next meeting, so the applicant can also look at it, and hopefully if all, if everything lines up, that we could actually have a vote and sign a decision at the next meeting, is that?
That should be the goal.
Okay, but, and that, that works, right, like that?
Yes.
That sounds like the fastest we can turn around, because no matter what, even if we voted and said yay tonight, there still wouldn't be a decision ready until we reviewed it at the next meeting. So we could get as far as we can tonight under some assumptions, and then if we don't, i- i- if the board votes against it at our next meeting, well, that's wasted time, but, I mean, that's not wasted time, is time spent in the direction of an outcome that did not come to pass. But we could move further in the hopes that if, if the board does vote in favor, we're getting the applicant on their way quicker. Does that work for us?
Yeah.
Okay, cool.
So, Mr. Chair, may I recommend something?
Yes, please.
Just in a way forward, but generally speaking, this point, in my experience, I would begin to prepare a draft decision, and I'm hearing about three or four special conditions we've already talked about. One, the applicant's willing to provide an easement of access across Pierce Ave to satisfy everybody that, that's taken care of.
Mm-hmm.
And then, two, there should be some sort of condition talking about, uh, the need, maybe at six months, to do a review of the impact to the neighborhood, and whether there are concerns, and whether additional mitigation may be warranted or, or should be reviewed. That's standard condition, usually that's in decisions. And I think, three, this idea of, uh, this decision is subject to confirmation that the applicant has the legal rights to use Pierce Ave in the manner that they have proposed. Takes care of all the things I think we've been talking about tonight, do any of those sound problematic?
Just, it's the number, I'm sorry, it's the number of one, just keep in mind, we just can't grant an easement, we have to grant it to the town, so that's going to require an acceptance, so we have, there's going to have to be a petition that's going to have to go to, um, town meeting at some point.
Yeah.
Okay.
And that, and that's understood, so it would be written, the condition would be written, and then shared with you, and then we'd be able to talk in the interim between now and the next meeting about language that you're comfortable with, or that you're satisfied with. That goes in the draft decision, and then goes out to them.
Sure.
Only they can deliberate and.
Right.
And review that.
And on number, right, and number three, as far as the status of Pierce Road, I mean, again, all due respect, you know, we have an opinion that, you know, the status of the title to confirm, Mr. Willsmer, is we own both sides. So I think we've, we've shown our side of that, so I'm just kind of concerned that this isn't, says, subject to us proving it, we've already proved it.
I guess it's, I'm talking about another legal analysis, if it ever comes, if it ever.
So I, I, I may or may not have an issue with that, but I think there ought to be some kind of a time limit, because then we could be in limbo for.
So let's trade what I.
Well, you, we'll, we'll come up with something.
I was going to say, I'd like you two to discuss this, figure out something that together you feel meets the needs of the town, and, and the applicant, I'm not looking, that meets all the discussed needs, and then you're going to bring that to the board, and then I'm sure we'll have an opinion, we are very good at having opinions on this stage. So, but hopefully it will match. All right, now, Mr. P., does it look like you wanted, did you want to speak?
Bob, he's eleven, winning Green Court, I just want to applaud the board for moving toward a decision at their next meeting. You're likely to lose a member soon, um, you know, and so I just applaud that you're moving toward a decision, thank you.
Thank you. All right. Please.
Mike Lovell, five seventy-nine Reservoir Road. So, I'm not an engineer, but would it make more sense if they own both sides, if they just put a petition across the road back there, and you completely eliminate the front part of Pierce Ave that they own, and you just use the back part, like where you come down Elizabeth, you know, that way there, you, you, you get rid of the confusion in the front, coming off thirteen that people were considering, and then you just, they have all the, the property across the street, because they technically are going to own it, so you eliminate that.
My understanding is there are, that sounds easy on the surface, but we, that's where we start to get into the whole, but it is a public way. Maybe it's a public way on private land, and yeah, that's kind of weird, but it happens, I guess. And so the town has been using it as a road, and again, I think it's worth keeping in mind that this is a situation where the applicant really found a, with zero negative judgment meant for me on this, when I say this. The applicant found a really convenient loophole to meet a parking need that, in my opinion, as an individual, yeah, they need parking there.
No question.
So, uh, they, they found a way to get it, and that's the goal, and otherwise life can remain unchanged for everybody.
I just thought that would be an easier, you know, it's just a solution, maybe that you could be looked at, but.
That, that was also brought up in passing, and there has been some comments from other people on Pierce and the surrounding areas, saying they don't necessarily want that access cut off.
Yeah, okay, just a thought.
Yep, no, appreciate it, thank you. All right, so it sounds like the professionals are going to professional, come back to us next week. If this gets done early, can it, just, no, just as a request from me, if it gets done early, and this is actually more for Chris, because it just has to do with, please get it into the SharePoint ASAP and let us know. And can we all try to really stay on top of our emails over the next two weeks, so we have time to review it? Because I would hate for us to get here and then be like, well, I didn't have time to look at it.
Sure. So that's what I'm looking for, I'll look for it in the SharePoint, or you're going to, you're going to just email me a Word version?
I'm going to email the draft decision.
Perfect.
And forth with you until we get to that point where I'm ready.
Fair enough.
Yeah, SharePoint's just, uh, we have a whole, we have a SharePoint thing where we have our files for meetings.
There's a portal that I can access, but as long as he and I can email it back and forth, that's fine.
Yeah, no, this is purely how we check documents.
Got it.
The public's going to see and hear all of this.
No, no, I have no problem, nope.
Planning Board is the only decision-making authority here.
Right.
And the public hearing is still open, and it's going to be all discussed in the public hearing, obviously. You and I are just prepping something.
Gotcha.
For that deliberation.
Thank you, thanks for the clarification.
Yep, and, yeah, I should probably give that another couple of sentences for the public here. This is the way, th- this is the way it works, this is normal, where there's a discussion back and forth among professionals, they come to the board and say, here's the idea we came to that we agree upon, what is the board's opinion? That is normal, that is not a violation of any rules, because that's, there's no decisions made, because neither the applicant nor Mr. Riley can make the decisions, they can come up with ideas. Then it comes to the board, and the board's the one who votes. I re- yeah, because, thank you, because I realize that could sound different to people who don't see the workflow every day.
Yeah, and I want the folks to know, watching and following this, that my job, first and foremost, of being the planning board, the elected officials with this authority, is to protect the residents, the butters in this case, and do the best for the town in terms of the highest, best use with the least amount of impacts, that's my job. So that's what the decision that I'll prepare will reflect, and we'll go back and forth and try to find a common ground.
Okay. Do we have anything else we want to, uh, direct Mr. Riley to in terms of other concerns we have? Okay, great. All right, so, sounds like that's all squared away, and I would be looking for a motion to continue the public hearing for four ninety-four Electric Ave to our meeting on March twenty-fourth at six oh five PM.
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right.
We're going to shoot for all five voting members?
I'm sorry?
We're going to shoot for all five voting members?
Yeah.
Because, so we're invoking the Mullins rule on two of the members who are not here.
Yes.
Your, that's your goal, is the five members to vote on it?
Uh, oh, ideally, yes, that would be.
Because there's a process with that. Okay.
I mean, they just have to, they, they have to review, watch the meeting and to review the minutes, sign the Mullins form.
Yep.
They can do it for one meeting.
Yep.
And we're good.
Both are eligible, okay.
Yep, okay, great, yeah, no, I see, I, the board's so good about attendance, I think we're, okay. All right, and the hearings continued, you all set?
Thank you.
Thank you. You too.
You too.
Okay. Going back to the agenda. I like simple projects, maybe we're there now, let's find out. Nine ninety-four Northfield Road, site plan approval is next, oh, wait, is that?
Continued.
No, continued, uh, do we, do we have to have a vote, do we have to have a vote on continuing it?
Yeah, just, um.
Okay.
The applicant's requested a continuance to the March twenty-fourth meeting, so moves.
Uh, yeah, at six oh five PM?
Yep. So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great. Two thirty.
Was that nine ninety-four?
Yeah, so, I apologize, no.
We sent an email that there was a request for continuance?
Uh, yeah, I. Oh, sorry. Yeah, I know, I, I'm also going to apologize, I had this knowledge from a previous discussion with Chris, and so I was just treating it like everyone was, that's my, that is my fault.
A lot of the neighbors are having issues about this.
Okay, so, um, they, I don't know what the, they, it needs to be, the request has been to continued to.
Let's go in and confirm that.
What?
Logan got the email as well, Logan, can you look through the email and see what that request was?
Okay. So let's, we're going to double-check everything for you here, but there was a request for continuance, so we'd be looking to continue to our next meeting. Want to make sure that that meets, if they said, no, we need a month, that'd be different.
So we're not speaking about this tonight?
No.
No?
So it would be, it would have been, yeah, it's nine nine four, I looked at it quick, but.
Yeah, no less, we're good, we're double-checking things, give us one second to double-check on all right, I apologize.
Yeah, they, um, the request was for a continuance to March twenty-fourth.
Okay, now, we do have members of the public who have shown up tonight. Can we, I know he's voted to continue. Whether, can we allow them to speak their piece, so it's there in the record, or is that a problem?
I'm going to say you should allow it.
Okay, I, I, I'm fine with.
They didn't, I mean, we don't have a, a reasonable way to contact them to say it's continued.
I'm very comfortable with that.
The board can't deliberate, we can take testimony in, the board can't deliberate.
Okay.
Um, there was somebody else that was going to speak on Zoom tonight, too.
We can have them, they count as here, people who are on Zoom count as present, so what's going to happen? We can, you can certainly speak. We can't go talking about what you speak about. But you're welcome to speak, it is on the record, we have it, we can deliberate it at our next meeting, whereas continued to, I don't want you to feel like your time is wasted, I apologize about this. This is sometimes an issue, you get the last minute, can't, say cancellations, continuances on the legal side, but I can't, right, like they can't be here.
Yeah, this is available to the applicant, so I'm a little, it's definitely an inconvenience for the butters and the public.
I agree.
It, it is a little problematic to have them be able to present testimony on the record, and the applicant's not here to defend themselves. So it is a reasonable thing for them to ask for a continuance, if they're not ready to proceed with the public hearing.
So you, you're saying the public, because that's, I, I misunderstood.
You don't know what we're about to hear, but I, I'd say you can allow some discussion, keep it short, to the point, and then we'll provide that to the applicant, and they'll have the ability to respond to the board prior to the public hearing on the twenty-fourth.
Okay, I'm.
There has to be sort of ground rules when you're, you have to be careful here.
Yeah, no, we, uh, when we had our interim, we worked on a, a procedure, and we didn't really get it fully solidified, where we were hoping to have something, and this would be worth us looking at, where if it was continued with less, basically, if it had to be continued with less than a week's notice, we needed applicants to understand we were still going to have people be allowed to speak and everything.
I don't think there's a legal problem, does it put the board in?
Okay.
Legal jeopardy.
Because I want to respect the fact people show up.
Okay.
Okay, so what's not going to happen is you're not going to get a response from us tonight, it doesn't mean we're not paying attention. I just want to make, I want to set the expectation for you and for everyone at home, that that's where we are, love it. Come on up, and then I'll also turn to Zoom as well, uh, I see your hands in Zoom, and we will get to you next.
Okay, um, so my name is Michelle Matthew, I live at nine fourteen Northfield Road, which is the dirt road, Old Stagecoach Road. I've lived there, it's been a private road for me for years, we've maintained it, we've taken care of it, um, me and the Hersh's, um, who are behind me. I wasn't really happy about this whole thing when they first did the conservation with people going by my roads, because it was private the whole time, I've gotten used to it, I've, you know, um, but it, you know, people are parking up there, not a ton of parking, not, I mean, not a ton of people are parking on the dirt road, um, probably one or two cars, it's not too bad. And then when I heard they were putting in, um, a parking lot, I was like, oh, but I didn't know where it was going to be. So I thought they were just going to put a parking lot across the street, um, from, from nine ninety-four, where that's where they originally said the town said where the parking was going to be. And then I was like, okay, well, that's good, because it's not going to be on the dirt road and blocking us from getting in and out. And, and so far, it, like I said, it hasn't been bad, one or two cars. Then, um, when I found out it's going to be directly in the middle, across in the woods, and all that woods is going to be opened up, which is one thing scenery, it's already a lot louder on Northfield Road, I can hear the train station, um, from Fitchburg, okay? So, you know, and I spoke with some of the other neighbors about their concerns also, the butters. So I don't understand why we need ten-car parking lot, first of all. There's maybe one or two cars every, in, in the summertime, when it's, that's considered a little bit busy, most people just walk their dogs or whatever by there. The thing that I'm mostly concerned about, um, is at night, who's going to, we've already had break-ins prior, um, over the years, um, in the neighborhood because of the woods. People go out there, they party, everything, um, there's going to be people, I think, because of, already of what has happened at the golf course, there's been people loitering, drinking, partying, um, there's been problems on Northfield Road with people dropping drugs off. And I'm just really afraid that this is, this parking lot will, because it goes into the woods like that, is going to be a spot where I'm going to have problems, and being scared, being over where I'm at, you know. going to have problems, and being scared, being over where I'm at, you know, with all this happening and people maybe drinking or coming down my road, walking down my road, being in the woods right across, and then the golf course has the whole issue with their golf balls near number seven, I think it was, where it's going to make their business bad, because you're going to have more people there, maybe not right away, but more people as we go. And I don't understand why the parking has to be there, when we already have parking, you guys already approved the parking, what, at the end of Stagecoach Road, near Howard Street? So we already have parking there, why do we need more parking? Why do we need 10 parking spots? That's going to open up and make it just, it, Northfield Road is so beautiful, why open it up even more? And we talked about, last meeting, about safety. Now, safety, they said, why can't, you know, we have the parking across the street, right? And what was noted is, you know, it's not safe to walk across the street. Well, I don't think it's going to be safe with all that traffic going in and out of there, between the golf course either, with traffic coming out from the golf course side, and, you know, with people trying to get out, it's already starting to be a busy road, and we're just keep opening up that road more and more and more, and this is supposed to be, you know, some things, you know, people can, you know, go and walk or whatever, but even the whole liability part, even for the golf course and for the town, with golf balls, if they are, first of all, it's going to hurt their business with people over there and using their thing, it's not going to be as private for them and the people that are playing golf, for one thing. The other thing is, with all the golf balls, people hitting, they could be hitting people, hitting people, and hitting cars, wrecking cars. Is that a liability for the town? Is it a liability for the golf course? I don't know, if somebody gets hurt, is that going to be a liability? You know, I have my own personal reasons of the whole privacy thing, you know, but the neighbors too, they're concerned about what might happen. I mean, we've had, Walmart has had a lot of homeless people, you know, tenting out back there. I'm wondering if this will make that come forward, because it's just a walk through the woods to this new parking lot, and it, what's going to happen, you know? Is it going to make what has happened before, the break-ins and the drug, the drug drops on our road? Is it going to make it worse now that there's more parking? I don't know. But I have concerns for that, and so does the neighbors, so...
All right.
And, you know, all the traffic there and accidents in that spot.
Great.
We already have parking, we already got parking approved, why do we need more? It's, you know, if it's a couple of cars on the dirt road, I mean, that's, that's one thing, but I think this is just a bigger animal.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. And we have a hand up on Zoom as well?
Hi, my name's Kate Winwiner, I'm the property owner of 939. I actually spoke with Michelle earlier today, and we agree on most of the things she just brought up, I just want to bring up a few more things from me personally and my property. The proposed driveway to go into the gravel 10-spot lot is directly across from my driveway and my mailbox. I already have issues with, so does Michelle, people parking at the end of my driveway to access the trails, both on the established side now, where there's the two-spot parking on my side, and then where there would be the proposed spot to go across for the trails going up behind. My major concern, like Michelle said, is safety. We have a lot of people walking on that road now, especially in the summertime and when the golf cars open. I get concerned now with people parking in the two dirt spot and then walking across the street. I've seen a couple of times almost kids get hit, or dirt bikes going back and forth across. I just get concerned with more parking in the area, drawing more people there, having more of these issues occurring. And then I do want to say, I have firsthand witnessed issues with the golf course, having flooding from the wetland area that's now labeled across the street from me, with that overflowing into the road, and it's, I did, I did attend virtually the last two meetings about this, and it sounds like they have proposed to solve the wetland issue that's there, but if there is, you know, a new driveway there and gravel backing up, I could get concerned with that flooding of the area, that's already pretty bad. Last week, when we had those continuous rainstorms, that whole area in front of my driveway was flooded. So it's just something I get concerned about with more traffic in that area and people walking. And lastly, like she said, there's people parking now in the two dirt spot with their golf clubs, and just walking across the road to the first tee box that's there, the golf course, and jumping on and playing golf. Not that I own the golf course, I don't, I have no stake in it, but I can see how the golf course has major issues with people parking in the woods there. It would be easier for them to not get caught and just walk through. Lastly, to wrap this up, I will say, I have found many golf balls at the end of my driveway, and that's, you know, not in a wooded area, it's clear, pretty far away from the golf course, maybe about 30 feet. So I understand the concerns Michelle brings up for having golf balls, liability with people parking their cars in there. Yeah, I agree with a lot of the things that she said, and I personally don't like bringing more attention to that part of Northfield Road, just for the safety aspects alone.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Was there anyone else here to comment on this specifically that needs to comment tonight? All right. See, oh...
I think you got somebody on Zoom.
I think we already...
Must she drop?
No, we did have someone speaking on Zoom. Oh, but if you, if there's someone else you know was here to speak, Bob, I don't know.
Bob Pease, 11 winner Green Court. I've been involved in this project from the very beginning, from the acquisition of the property to the, you know, designing of this lot. The entire goal is to bring more people to the Table Rock Conservation Area. The town spent good money to make that area, to buy the area, to make it available for the public, and, and we want 10 parking places. If you go down to, um, the Lane property on a Saturday or a Sunday, those, you know, those parking places are often filled, and, uh, you know, it, the parking across the street was always temporary. In order to get the grant, in order to get the land, we had to put show parking, and so we just threw two parking places, basically on the shoulder of the road, across the way in front of the sign, but those people have to cross the road. The entire goal of putting the parking lot in the middle was to try to address Michelle's concern about people going up the road, and to get people off of that road, and get them going through the woods, up through the middle of the property, not next to the golf course, and not next to the road. You know, we're building a trail that goes up through the middle of that property, that is as far away from the golf course and as far away from the road as we can make it, given the constraints of the, of the shape of the property there. And, and also, I'd just like to say, in my training as chairman of the Conservation Commission, you shouldn't be taking any, any testimony tonight. You should, it's not part of the public hearing, if you take testimony and it's not part of the public hearing, you really shouldn't be considering it, and I think procedurally you have a problem here. Thank you so much, and thank you for all you do.
All right. Great, I'm going to move us on with up or discussion.
Do we motion to continue to the 24th on this?
We have one, but if we need one now, we could, like, that was kind of happened earlier, right?
Yeah, okay.
We did, right?
Yeah.
Okay, cool, not crazy, great. Okay, well, not crazy in that specific way, there's other ways my wife would assume, would insist, in fact, I am. Okay. 213 Electric Ave for a stormwater management permit.
Again, Dan Sheen with Haley Ward. We had previously discussed this one at nauseam, like, it was actually very concise last time I was here. I have the same plan here that I shared last time, just kind of showing the nice colorful, colored version of what's going to be grass, what's going to be road, what's going to be building. Since the last time we were here, we did make some plan revisions based off what Graves Engineering had suggested, so far as moving some of the clay dams, adding some extra notations, performing onsite soil testing. We provided all that in the package that we provided on Open Gov. The only other thing that you're not going to see on this plan that we also added was the Tennessee gas easement. I guess there's a gas easement that kind of comes up, it kind of clips into Lot 5 there, it's all within the wetland, it's not anywhere near the limit of work, but just full transparency, there is an easement there, we showed on the revised plans. I'd be more than happy to go through all the responses from Graves Engineering, we haven't received anything from the letter we provided to them, but ultimately, we just went through pretty much saying, yep, no, we agree, we added this clay dam here, yep, we agree, we added extra notation. And then, as for the soil testing, when we were out there, we did encounter a significant amount of ledge material, it was very shaly, you could rip through it. Our stance on that is, where everything is kindly currently designed, it's got an underdrain, we didn't model any exfiltration in our model, so we didn't consider that loss. This is just more for an attenuation purpose. That's really it, I know the applicant is eager to get things moving, I understand from the board, if you guys would like to wait to see Graves Engineering's response to that, I totally understand that. If that's something you would like to do, I would just urge that maybe we could do something similar to Ilford, if we could have some sort of like draft decision made for the 23rd, so we can kind of keep things moving.
All right, I'm going back, I had the file up earlier, that's Graves. I'm just looking at, could you paraph, could you just give us, please, the items on which Graves said, make a change, and you then...
Yes.
...made a change, and we're waiting on Graves' responses?
Absolutely, so the ones that were just, I'll put it this way, because the way it was kind of set up was, one of them was recommendations, and one of them was more of stormwater concerns.
Okay.
So, the recommendations were mainly associated with the clay dams and the stone diaphragms. The whole purpose of this was just to try to make sure no water's really running all the way out into Electric Ave. Graves Engineering's recommendations were placing them a bit more strategically, so that way water is just more likely to go into the raid gardens. We made all of those changes. As for actual stormwater management, their concerns was with onsite soil testing, through MASTEP stormwater standards, you need to have two-foot offs at the groundwater from the base and bottom to actually have exfiltration, and due to site conditions, unfortunately, it's just a very big ledge outcrop, there's really not too much space you have, and we couldn't really determine in too many of the locations that there was actually seasonal high groundwater. We did see them in a few locations, but again, we're also going to put in that underdrain to make sure you still have that volume and things of that nature. So I would, I guess to really paraphrase it, the things you could wait for from Graves Engineering would just be their opinion on that two-foot offs at the groundwater, and kind of go from there. Regardless, with the machines that we had there that day, we couldn't get to that full depth in certain locations. Another thing that just, a common solution would be confirmatory test pits during construction, just so that way we'd have the bigger machines there, you can dig it up, do you still see it, and then go from there.
Okay. Thank you, and this is a pub, this is a public hearing, I'm going to, first, do we have any immediate comments before I go to the public? Okay, it's a public hearing, do we have any members of the public who wish to speak? Seeing none, great. So, I mean, thinking forward a little, we have a moment, I don't think it's unreasonable. Now, I do want to be clear, one of the reasons I, we don't normally make accommodations, like trying to look ahead for decisions, but that was specifically at 494 Electric there. As you could gather, that has a thing.
Absolutely.
Now, that said, I think it might be, there's no harm in us thinking ahead and saying, besides standard conditions, first of all, let me turn, do we have any big pressing concerns beyond what Graves mentioned, what the applicant is addressing, and then there's a little bit of fuzziness there about what might happen in the future? That, I think, is something we might have to tease out a little.
And if I may, Chair, I know Matt Allison before, he had also mentioned that last meeting about the stormwater operation and maintenance plan, having some like condo documents and stuff like that, we did also provide that. They're currently in a draft state, the only thing that's going to change is, as you kind of go from lot to lot, obviously, just the housing numbers would change and things of that nature, but just want to, again, just full transparency.
Yeah, thank you, I did want to comment that, I saw that, all of that added in as well, in the Dean language and everything else.
Perfect.
Great. And so, yeah, the applicant did put all that in to match our, to match our stormwater needs. Other thoughts we have, questions, et cetera? My, so, oh, sorry.
No, no, no.
So, the remaining, so we have to see if Graves is happy with, is hunky-dory with everything, and there's some test pits you couldn't dig correctly due to the limitations of the time, correct? And I heard you mention, but I want to check with our language director as well, that would it be reasonable to say that those get dug and checked during construction and so long as...
Absolutely.
Okay, I know we've done that before.
Yeah.
Like, but I want to make, let me phrase, I remember that we've done that before, but again, I'm, I'm aware of the leaks in that system. All right. So, we would want, I think we would want a condition, I would want a condition about the test pits and everything being dug later during construction, seeing that they meet. Do we have any other concerns that we'd want to see included in special conditions?
I don't have anything.
I don't have anything.
Uh-uh.
Okay. So, I mean, so, while we're thinking through, having language handy on the, on that test pits, I think would be helpful for us...
Yep.
...for the next meeting, because then we can look at it, and if it's standard, and that is the, so, if the board approves with standard conditions, and, um, that one additional condition.
I can get that from Graves.
Yeah.
Because he's probably not going to come back with any...
Oh, okay.
...comments, otherwise, it sounds like they've addressed all his concerns.
Great.
So, I'll just ask him, provide a special condition for construction-related...
Yeah.
...test pits.
And then, if we have that, if that can be thrown together easily into a decision for our next meeting, then it might be the case, we have a couple of members of the board, and I don't want to move forward without them being comfy with it.
Completely understandable.
But, hey, if we can, maybe we can give you two weeks sooner.
Be great.
Great, all right. Does that feel good to us?
Yeah.
Okay, so, there's nothing there that needs a vote, other than continuing, and I'm assuming our next meeting's good for you?
Absolutely.
Looking to maybe a motion to continue to our March 24th meeting at 6:05 PM, this is for 213 Electric Ave.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Awesome, thank you, guys.
Love it.
Thank you.
Okay, going back to our agenda. Woo! Those are, my pen's not drawing, oh. Those are our public hearings for the night, and I see we have the decisions from last meeting as well, because we couldn't do those then, great.
Yeah, a bunch of decisions, but only three members, I mean, I guess you could do whatever you want, but, three of them, though, have been lingering.
Yeah, so here's, my, part of my thought is, we've already voted and said we like it, like, we've already proved these, this is just reviewing the decisions as written. I think we can do that with three, because that's...
Yeah.
No, that's not a vote, that's just eyes on the document.
Yeah.
All right, and do we have those in SharePoint? I did not see them earlier, but I might have missed them.
They've been hanging around in there for, in just the decisions.
Let's take, I mean, it's quite possible I missed. Let's take, I mean, it's quite possible I missed them.
And then, there's two new ones, which I emailed to, because it was
Yep. I don't see a decisions area on our Share
If you click the upper left, the hamburger icon
Yep.
there's a
Decisions! Oh, in the hamburger, okay. So, we've got 560 Goodrich, 255 Sunny Hill, and in our email, we have 801
Give you the paper copy in case you
Thank you. Northfield and 110 Pleasant. Okay.
Those are both just with standard
Okay. 801 and 110 are with standard conditions.
Which include the requirement to record
Yep.
by reference with the, on the deed of the property.
Love it. And the other ones we have, again, are wrong. 560 Goodrich, 2, did I just say that? No.
560 Goodrich, 255 Sunny Hill?
Yes.
Those are the ones in the folder.
Yes. I was just thinking, didn't I already say that? No, I did not. Which number is the recording everything condition? I hope that makes sense. That was maybe not enough words. For, I'm looking at 255 Sunny Hill, for example. Oh, Mr. Allison. Mr. McLeod, good day.
Welcome back.
What number is the condition that has the recording things on the deed and having the handbook and everything?
It's the last one.
Okay.
I know that. It was added.
Maybe I'm looking at the wrong one. Let me see.
Anyway.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Because that should be at, 255 Sunny Hill should have that, correct or no?
I don't know if we, at that point, had talked about that.
So, we, okay.
One of those, I think it was Goodrich.
Okay.
And then, we had further discussion. That should be a standard condition.
Okay.
And so, now it is.
Okay. I don't think I see that on 560 Goodrich, but maybe I'm missing it? Or maybe there's a more updated version than what I see in the SharePoint? Because the last condition I see there is the illicit discharges to stormwater management system, 22, but
You've got several decisions that have been lingering now for quite some time, and they didn't reflect the updated, what is needed, and I think Mr. Allison has identified this, is the standard conditions need to be updated.
Okay.
And so, that's why I put them in the two most recent
Got it.
decisions. But at that time, if those were prepared, the earlier ones
Okay.
Goodrich and Sunny Hill, we weren't.
That, I get it. That is frustrating on my end, and that's not you, Chris. This is just
No, it isn't.
the whole thing that's been, the rotating door and challenges we've had for the year of getting your position filled, was, we did have that as a standard condition, and I think we've made some assumptions there, but, all right. We have paper copies of 801 and 1, 801 Northfield and 110 Pleasant?
I'll pass them down to the
Oh, no, just because I can't get those to open in my email. It's, I'm getting an error. Something went wrong with the document preview was being created. Oh, there we go. Found a workaround.
I have a question on the Northfield, and we probably applied to both of them, right? But there's only one of them in front of us right now. Should, do we need to make any mention of the scenic road in the decision?
I don't think we ever have. I think that's always been an entirely separate process.
I don't recall them seeing, showing a construction entrance, so in the, in the construction period, there's a possibility that they would be tracking all kinds of stuff back into the roadway, and, I mean, that would be a concern at any roadway, but especially on a scenic road. Not sure that it makes a whole lot of difference. I can't imagine that conservation would leave a mess.
I think if we wanted to condition more on that, that's something we would have already had to have done so as well.
That's fine. Just looking forward to the SOP conversation for the standardizing the
Yep.
conditions.
I can put some language in. I don't exactly what you're talking about. I can put some language in for you.
Yep. So, I don't need it now, thank you, though.
Especially because it was on a scenic road, and it was mentioned in the hearing, and they did identify the trees. None of the trees to be removed were, in fact, in the right-of-way, so maybe just a condition that no trees greater than whatever a size is, six inches, 12, 10, whatever, shall be removed without, whatever.
Yeah, I
I think you guys get it. Yeah.
I agree. I don't think we can
I, I think you're right.
For those watching at home, the full sentence that was not spoken but understood was, I don't think we can, because it was not conditioned initially, and now we are reviewing a decision. All right. I do not need more time to review. If others do, that's fine. I don't want to cut people short.
Oh, so, we're doing all four of them? A, B, C, and D?
Yeah, I have to
The earlier three, I could not print.
So
We won't have toner and ritter until Wednesday.
Oh, that stinks. Yeah. So, we've got 558 and 560 Goodrich, 255 Sunny Hill. Those are both in the SharePoint, in the little hamburger menu, which I can, is maybe the upper left-hand corner has that three-line menu. Click on that, you can get down to decisions.
Okay. Oh, can you, I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
Yes. In the SharePoint, oh, looks like a man's going to show you.
SharePoint, and then, oop, decisions.
I don't think I'm even opening SharePoint. Oh, my SharePoint.
Are you in SharePoint? No, you're in OneDrive.
Yeah. Oh, it says SharePoint there, though.
If you tap the little nine dot box
Uh-huh. Oh, there we go.
It will give you access to SharePoint.
Beautiful. Thank you.
Yep.
So, my only concern, the only thing I recall was the legal descriptions for the joint maintenance of the stormwater and the joint maintenance of the common driveway. And if those have been addressed, then I'm fine with those as well.
Yeah. And the answer is, we didn't have that as one of our standard, we thought that was one of our standard conditions. It was not listed as one of our standard conditions, so we can't really go back and mandate.
I, I don't agree with that, because the board had standard conditions, and again, no fault of anybody in the office, however, there has been considerable turnover, and the board had set previous standard conditions. So, whether or not the office had kept up with those, if the board, at a meeting, after we've already discussed and approved standard conditions, we say standard conditions, then it should be implied that it would be the standard conditions that this group, this body, had previously discussed and talked about and approved.
I don't disagree with any of that conceptually. I'm just trying to rectify that with the ambiguity that exists because there's some institutional knowledge that has been lost, both in people's brains and in terms of file tracking, and how we then go back and fix that, or if that's just something we have to do moving forward, right?
There should have been a motion and vote of standard conditions in each and every one of your permitting authorities.
Yeah.
That's what I'm being told there was, but nobody seems to be able to provide that to me.
Yeah.
So, until I have that, it's a shot in the dark.
Mm-hmm. Well, let's
Unless we want to start from scratch.
No, let's, I can't.
When do you think you approve these standard conditions?
Within, I think it was
The Northfield Home and Five Lots, those stormwater permits? That's when it came up, right? Because
I don't remember when it came up. That's the issue. I think it was in the year before, like, I think it was within a year before Adam left. I think it was in his final year that we, so
Twenty-two, 2022?
So, okay.
So, the only ones we've been able to find are from 2021.
We have, it was
And then, there's standard conditions that are all over the place since then. So, I just need to know, which standard conditions do you, does the board want to use? And I sent you, Mr. Chair, three sets of standard
I didn't see those. Let me check.
From, that Richard Harris had used from this past summer.
I
Those are the most recent standard conditions, stormwater, common driveway, and site plan review. And I hadn't hear anything back, so I assume those are good.
I apologize, I did not, I apologize, I did not
Okay.
see those. I'm
Let me send them to the whole board.
Yeah, please, because I don't
We can't deliberate on them that way, but let me send them to the whole board, and let's just see if we can
Yeah. Yeah, please. No, I appreciate that. Thank you. I'm not denying you sent them
There's some tweaks, anyway, so I think you're going to have to motion and vote the updated standard
Yes.
And we'll use that as a basis, and whenever we need to adjust the deed recordings
And let's
requirement, or whatever.
And let's put that on the agenda for the next meeting
Okay.
so we can
Good.
get that hammered out. It's a long meeting, it stinks, but that's life. So, are we good to sign the four documents in front of us today? I don't, I think I am. There's some weirdness there, but I, I don't think we have a lot of choice in the matter, and I do want to be respectful of the fact that people are waiting on us.
Question.
Yeah.
They've already gotten the approval. They are able to begin construction without getting the order of, without getting the final conditions, aren't they?
They are not, because it has to be filed with the town clerk
It does.
and there's an appeal period, so they are awaiting decisions. And unless there's some weirdness somebody identifies to me, then I'm assuming they're good and cover what you motioned approved.
Well, I'm not, I'm not comfortable signing A and B because of the previous conversation we had. That's just me, though.
Yeah. I am not, I am not happy signing those two. I'm willing to, for the sake of things moving forward, because it isn't, that just, that just isn't the applicant's fault. It's
My understanding of where we are is, regardless of how we feel about it, because we've closed the hearing and everything, like, we can't go back and change it at this point, or am I mistaken in that?
I think you're basically right. Like, I think the debate is, when we said standard conditions, it is less clear
Okay.
what that meant.
Okay.
But I think we're at the point that Our house having some chaos in the background Our house having some chaos in the background should not negatively impact... That isn't really appropriate that that negatively impact applicants where there's already been a delay in it as we tried to do some figuring.
Sure.
So...
While I don't disagree with you, an additional two weeks, as opposed to not having the conditions in perpetuity on multiple properties, perpetuity, not just two weeks, forever. It's... And I, like you said, I don't, I'm not comfortable pointing fingers at anybody having a fault in this. It's, it's just the situation. It's... And we're all volunteers. And, and our, and our staff has turned over considerably. And apparently, there wasn't great record retention. So, I mean, it's nobody's fault, per se, right? It's just a matter of fact that it's my feeling, and, and again, just one person, it's my feeling that these legal requirements are not something that we can just lightly say, "Oh, well, we messed up on this one. We'll try to do better next time."
And I think I come down on the side that we, we approved it with... We added those in the past because we felt it was important and we didn't like it. But that, that these things weren't recorded. But ultimately, we approved them for many years without those. And I don't know the two more... Because it ends up being just two more in this case.
Well, I, I would mention also that that was recorded in perpetuity as well on YouTube, our meeting. And I'm almost positive that I made a very clear point that the standard conditions should include these requirements.
That's fair.
Okay.
I think that I...
So, then you need a motion and vote as a body. But those are the standard conditions going forward. And I need to know that.
Yeah.
So, let's just fix it and, you know, going forward. Please.
So, do we... So, the question is really Goodrich and Sunny Hill, stormwater. Do we sign as is? Do we go back and verify, yes, we did say this is included in standard conditions and put it in? This is more legwork that we, we don't, aren't always capable to do between meetings as well as we'd like, being real. Where do we fall there, I think, is the question.
Goodrich was also a common driveway.
Yeah. So, I mean the stormwater, the common driveway being separate.
Okay.
I mean the, the stormwater for Goodrich and the stormwater for Sunny Hill. I think you hear Mr. Allison saying, "It's better to wait." You hear me saying, "It's better to move." And frankly, I'm not 100% convinced which of us is right anyway. So...
I don't think either one of us is right.
No, I...
We have valid points.
Yeah, no, exactly. So, this is why we have a board, though. How do we want to handle it?
Yeah.
You've got the two loud mouths. Glenn only counts as a loud mouth once the state starts levying mandates.
Dang.
For my clarification, what... If we're... Are we capable of going back and saying that this is what the special conditions were supposed to be?
Standard conditions.
Sorry, standard conditions for Goodrich and Sunny Hill were supposed to be. Or are we locked into, you know, this is the given version that was put forward at the time that we closed the hearing and moved forward?
I think we would have to go back and find either, like, the actual standard conditions that we did decide on a couple of years ago. Or we'd have to go back to that meeting and verify if we did say this was a necessary component during that deliberation.
When I prepare draft decisions, I go back and I
Yeah.
watch the entire video of the whole procedure.
I get that. Yeah.
So, my draft decisions reflect what happened.
Mm-hmm.
You can do whatever you like, you know, in terms of what you signed, but...
Yeah. So, that's where we are.
So, what I'm gathering from this is the standard conditions that we've been given here, the documents that we've been giving here, reflect what it was that we discussed and what we decided at that meeting, and also what standard conditions we already had in place, recorded in place.
So, the issue being that there was a change that what we were using as standard conditions may have shifted correctly or not. I... Because it's also possible there was... I can envision a moment where Richard said, "Oh, I use these standard conditions." And we did a quick vote and said, "Okay, that looks good." And we didn't really... I don't know that happened. I don't know it didn't. I like, I look at it and go, "I have... That could have happened and I really have no clue." And I'd have to go back and watch six, eight months of meetings
Sure.
in detail to know. So, I don't...
And the standard conditions that we were looking for, that Mr. Allison was indicating to, nobody can locate at this point. It was somewhere during Adam Bernie's...
Yeah. No one... I mean, nobody has located. Like, it may exist. We... I may have a copy on my computer. I haven't looked as deeply as I should.
Sure.
So, yeah, we have not found... I hate to say cannot find, but for a more colloquial, less absolute definition of cannot find, yes.
Yeah.
I can refer back to recent, and they were all A and R development projects, single-family homes. But the 360 Flat Hill, which was the orchard, there were 10 lots in there. And then the corner of Northfield Road and Holman Street, I think that was five, maybe six lots. And I'm almost positive that all those lots got recorded on their deed, this, the requirement for maintenance on the stormwater. And that's, that's the standard condition that I was referring to.
So, we could go back and check those, and those decisions in particular, which are on file? All right. In the... Are there other questions on it? Because if there aren't, I'm going to move us forward to coming to a decision.
I don't think so.
All right. So, I just, I'm trying to gauge where we are. You've got Matt's point and you've got Matt's point. You've got the, no, we do have reasonable documentation, but we have to dig it out. You've got move forward because there's a point of contention. We need to work with the applicant. I don't... They're both good points. Which way are we going to go tonight? I'm just... Just give me a hand up for which you prefer, okay? Just so we can kind of do it, figure out what we want. Like, I don't, I don't know what everyone's thinking here. Because there's a lot of quiet and that's okay. So, can I just get a quick hand? If you're saying, "I would rather..." "I, I really think this is here and was part of our standard conditions in a clearly recorded way and we can kind of get to there in short order," or just move forward? So, if you're saying, "We really need that deed, that, that recording and the deed and everything and that was an expectation," can I get just a hand or a yes so I kind of have a clue where our numbers are there versus the other?
Could I ask just one quick question?
Yeah, please.
Maybe not so quick. So, is, is the main issue at point, the, the perpetuity of them having to do maintenance of stormwater?
It is the recording... You're supposed to maintain your stormwater.
Right. And I guess my follow-up question to that, does anyone actually maintain their, their systems? Like, even the ones that are required to?
Yes. It was our belief that people would do it more if they knew they had to.
Yep.
And that's why the recording happened, or the requirement for recording happened and then got lost. So, yeah, I mean, that's kind of like the, do people do it? Hopefully.
But is that the main, the main sticking point?
Yeah, it's the recording.
Yeah. The fact that it's not enlisted as...
Yes.
Do, do they update the deed, you're asking?
No, I guess I was, I guess I was just wondering if there ultimately is a difference, if it is, if we sign it as presented versus if it is recorded on the deed as being a requirement to maintain it.
I think we're looking at that point at a very small sample size.
Yeah.
And so, statistics break down real fast.
Yeah.
Because there's enough room for error in here in either direction that...
We require every decision to be recorded with a registry.
Yeah.
A proper title exam with purchase of any property would reveal that. So, there is that protection for our future property owner in terms of what's required with their property. But this is an extra layer of protection. So, that's what it is.
And it's, and it's the land use director's position that we, we should move forward, sign it and move forward?
Yeah. That's, that's... Let me, I don't have to speak for him. It's right there.
The draft decisions that I prepared reflect what you voted for.
Right.
They reflect the deliberations that actually happened. So, I review the... And then I send them out so that you can look at it in advance and, and tell me something needs to be corrected. So, I feel like there's something else I should be doing here that I'm not aware of.
Yeah, so, I mean, he's, he's, you know, certainly not telling me not to sign it. So, I mean, I'm leaning towards sign. I think the mistake was made when...
No, we don't even have the three decisions in paper.
Yeah.
To sign, to physically sign here. So, we can go ahead and correct them, however you want. Just tell me what it is.
Right.
So, I can bring the paper copy and it can be signed. Because we will have the residents coming going, "What is going on?"
Right.
I think if we have precedent in the form of these are previous approvals that we had and they had these standard conditions, then it, it makes sense for those standard conditions to have continued forward. So, if, as Mr. Allison indicated, we have properties that we have approved that have these standard conditions...
And we're reasonably close, it's... Yeah.
Yes, yeah, that they should be brought forward as part of what our given standard conditions are.
So, I'm going to send those standard conditions out that I sent to the chair quite a while ago. And you can take a look at them, add whatever you want. I don't... Yeah.
Okay.
Just get me a set of standard conditions I can use for the drafting of the decisions, please. Thank you.
So, I think we just hit 9B.
Hit what?
Agenda item 9B. Partly, yeah.
9B? We have an agenda 9B? I only have...
Review of standard operating procedures.
Oh, okay. My, I'm looking at an older copy. That's... I don't have 9B. I only have 9A. There we go. Okay.
That's a bigger review than standard conditions, obviously.
Yeah. I'm hearing people want to... I actually don't even know what I'm hearing. Mitch, I think it comes down to you.
To me?
Well, I think I've heard... I think...
You've got two physical hard copy decisions that you can sign.
Well, you're right. The two we can sign tonight.
The standard conditions that we've talked about.
And those are the ones that... Those are the most recent ones for 801 Northfield Site Plan Approval and 110 Pleasant Site Plan Approval.
And one of these is known by the town, right?
Yeah. But we, we still shouldn't show bias that way.
No, but I...
But...
They're going to look after it because it's our property.
But, but also they're not stormwater. What we're talking about is stormwater.
Oh, right, right, right.
These are site plan approv... What we have in front of us that we can sign, we can.
Okay.
801 Northfield, 110 Pleasant. Those are physical copies we can sign. Those do not have the stormwater concern, which is what we've been discussing for 558 and 560 Goodrich and 255 Sunny Hill. So, for the things we can sign tonight, this is what we can sign. I think, do we feel good about those two that we can physi... Okay, great.
Sign away.
Do we have a regular pen?
I have.
Here, I'll let you go first. That's all the same document?
Oh, okay.
That's just the signature page?
Got it.
Pleasant, 110 Pleasant. Doesn't matter if this is blue.
Nope. Doesn't matter.
Black and blue are...
This is one of the ones they have to sign.
Black and blue ink?
What?
Black and blue ink are both fine?
Yeah.
Okay.
Please, thank you.
So, while you're signing this, what you're going to receive in the email are three separate sets of standard conditions. Okay?
Yep.
They're all different, from stormwater to site plan review to common driveway. Everybody understands that much?
Yep. And we'll be checking our email for those. Okay. All right. We've done what we can there. Now, board discussions, 100 Townsend Harbor Road.
Mr. Chair, you folks talked about this
Yeah.
earlier agenda and you said you didn't really have any input to provide the town or the selects as to a recommendation of purchase it for any particular use. You just, you, you didn't see that. So, that's the, essentially, the, the record that I gave Annie that went to the selects for their meeting the other night. I think Glenn attended that.
Yeah. I mean, my, my impression is you put it on the, tonight's agenda because I had mentioned the open space committee hadn't taken a formal vote on it yet. And you kind of put it on the agenda in case between the two meetings, maybe the open space had met it.
I don't think we even knew at the meeting the select board was
Right.
going to
Right.
take it at last Tuesday's meeting.
Yeah, so the land use director was helpful in providing me with the town's policy on the, the procedure for, you know, what happens when a, a property becomes, it comes out of chapter. And I think it was the, you know, the selectmen had 30 days or so to have their first meeting, which they just had. So, it's really now just the, the onset of that process. So, you know, the next meeting of the, the open space, hopefully, we'll have a, you know, a larger attendance from the, the membership to get a, a formal assessing of the, the six criteria that's set forth to essentially gauge the, you know, their position on the property. So, hopefully, that'll be forthcoming at the next open space committee. Because it was just an astute citizen that had caught it coming out of chapter, that forwarded that to the chairman of the open space committee. So, that's why the discussion, and my, my impression is why the, the discussion started, you know, you know, technically by the policy it started early. But obviously, the, the sooner those conversations start, the better, which, again, will bring us to the standard operating procedures. I think, I think that, that the current policy, you know, could be just, you know, honed into our, our standard operating procedures on, you know, how, how we get a more timely assessment of those properties coming out of chapter, to include looking at them before they even come out.
If your recommendation has changed for any reason, you can, you can go ahead and do that.
Yeah. And so, open space hasn't met yet. When is open space meeting?
I don't, I, I, I'm not sure when the next meeting is.
Okay. And this is... So, the count, I know the counter, we thought had started, didn't start, but now has started in the 120-day countdown.
Right.
And if I remember correctly, the 120-day countdown is not for the town to decide. It's for the town to do it. So, anything that comes from us, I think, has to be... It's not like the town has to decide in 120 days because I think we actually have to... I don't know exact... I don't remember what the... I know it's not... There's a lot more that has to happen than just saying yes, if, if memory serves. Is that correct?
It's the 120 days is for the town to exercise its right of first refusal. It's, the hundred twenty days is for the town to exercise its right of first refusal. That starts a whole nother process.
Okay.
We're correct.
Okay, but, so do we? So the hundred twenty day countdown is not for the town to decide, it's for the town to decide and act. Yes or no? Just decide?
Just decide.
Okay, great, I miss you.
So.
Love it.
That locks in the protection, but the town can then proceed.
Okay, got it, just trying to understand where we are. And we're early in the countdown, but it's happening, so if the open space is meeting reasonably soon.
Yep, yes.
I think if they don't make their next meeting, we're gonna have to act regardless. And I know that we were originally no opinion, and then it kind of came up, or as part of what came to no opinion was the idea of it could be a very good space for public gardens.
Yep.
And that kind of made us and others go, huh? So do we want to wait for open space to meet unless it gets too tight? And then we can decide if deliberate regardless without that input? Does that work?
Sure.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm fairly certain that they, they will, they will meet in a time, because they're very interested in it, so I, I don't, I don't anticipate that will be a problem.
I am not, so I am not trying to put, and this is not meant to castigate at all upon open spaces, it's just.
Agreed.
Thinking through all the normal issues that can happen.
Yep.
All right.
And as I figure out that, that process myself, I mean, I think particularly that, that, that property in, in particular, where it is pretty desirable, and the town, the town has essentially invested, is invested in it in terms of the lack of property taxes collected over the years. I mean, I, I would find it hard to not allow the voters to, I mean, that's all we're really doing, is putting it before the voters to see if. I know it's a little, a little tricky in terms of executing the, the first right of refusal, and that starts another clock. I mean, we have to be very mindful of the, the property owners. But I think it's, you know, it'd be hard pressed to, to deny the public the opportunity to vote on it, so.
And we should be mindful of the property owners. By the same token, when you put land into chapter, you get benefits from it.
Right, exactly.
And part of that, part of the cost of those benefits is when it comes out of chapter, there is a process, and the process can take time. You don't get the benefits and.
Right.
Then have all the luxury of a quick sale like people could do for.
Correct.
Yeah.
So I, I, considering that property, whether, whether, what my vote would be on town meeting floor is, is different, or could be different, but putting it before the voters, I think, is pretty common sense, but we can work through that.
All right. So it sounds like we're good to wait there. And next up is review of standard operating procedures. Did I put this on? I don't think I.
I think Matt did.
Okay, I was just looking for who's gonna lead this, because.
I, I had asked for it at the last meeting so that we wouldn't have this snafu with the decisions.
Yeah.
At this meeting. My hopes was to, to get together the, the various decisions that we'd had in the past. Basically, we need to sit down, and as, as Chris has already said, we need to sit down and, and make motions and votes on standard conditions. And not just for, I mean, for, for, for probably standard conditions for every special permit that we grant, I would think. And there's probably, what, eight or ten of them, that we ask PGA for eight or ten different things? Give or take?
We like that.
So we would want to have standard conditions, and for certain ones, in my opinion, we would want to have standard special conditions that we can have listed, and then given the project before us, and we're making the decision, say, well, we want this one, that one, and that one.
Yes, we've had this exact discussion in the past, and I get that we have to, I'm not, I get we have to have it again. It's actually healthy to have this discussion periodically anyway.
I think so.
Well, yeah, so your last adopted ones I can find, is standard operating procedures, are from twenty sixteen.
Yeah.
There was a draft that you were reviewing in twenty twenty one. With some red line and markup and so forth. I never could figure out where that went, maybe that was a victim of COVID. So, yes, you should, every five years you should be reviewing your standard operating procedures, particularly because zoning can change.
Yeah, no.
So it's time to do that anyway. So what I'll do is I'll get you the draft document from twenty twenty one.
Mm-hmm. Like it?
And then we'll work off of that, because you did work on that.
Yeah.
And looks like you got it pretty close to what you wanted. And I'll add the standard conditions, which should be part of.
And.
That section.
And I remember this debate, it wasn't a debate, the discussion we had, because it was about, quote, standard special conditions, and it came down to, we reviewed common special conditions that didn't always apply, but were frequent enough. We wanted some boilerplate wording. There weren't standard conditions, but that way, when we were granting certain special conditions that happened frequently, we could say, oh, so it'll be this. And then we didn't have to rewrite them every time. Yep? Sounds right.
Special conditions are usually highly specific to the project, but you're talking about, you must be talking about something you identified.
Yeah, no, there were speci, I can't tell you what the town had, but we had situations where, eight, there were special conditions that were, certainly were not always needed, but were more frequently needed. And that's where we wanted some boilerplate, because we'd sit here.
Yeah.
A few times a year going, how do we word this?
I don't think you had that conversation recently. I'd like to see.
It would have been, it would have been around, i- if we were looking at this in twenty twenty one, I think it would have been twenty twenty one. I feel like it was later.
I'll look for that, what you were talking about.
Feel like it was twenty, so let me, let me do math quick. You started in twenty twenty four, so that means Adam left in twenty twenty three. So I was remembering it in kind of last half twenty twenty two, first half twenty twenty three. But I could be, it sounds like, honestly, if it was late twenty twenty one, like, maybe I'm, my sense of time's only so good. So I think sending us those would be great.
Okay.
Okay.
So, I'm sorry.
Go.
Um, I'll, I'll also mention the select board has, has been recently discussing standardizing townwide. I'm not sure that they have authority over this group, however, if they are trying to standardize, then we should at least be open and accommodating to what they're trying to standardize, just my thought. Hmm, it's a town. I, that was, I, I don't even know, I've been watching the meetings out of order, unfortunately, so I. They would.
Well, you should always act consistently.
As far as, as far as standard operating procedures, I think.
Oh, okay, okay.
Yeah, I, I, I'm not, I would be interested to see where the overlap is, where we can be similar. I'm very open to that, just, I think we address different things with different indistinct legal needs, but we'll find out. I'm not, I'm certainly not opposed. All right. So zoning workshop, we've got accessory dwelling units and floodplain map updates. I mean, good news, quote, good news. There's not a lot for us to address, address here per se, because a lot of this has been handed down from on high in pretty tight wording. But we'll take a look. And Chris, you.
That should be in your staff report from last meeting.
Yep.
And that should be the, roughly the final language that, by the way, on this topic of the selects, select board looking for standardization, they have me on their agenda tomorrow to talk about the zone. That's coming to annual town meeting. And from the way it's been described, to me, they're going to review whether they want to approve putting it on the warrant, which. That, so that's what I'm gonna be talking with them tomorrow.
Do you understand that that's their authority to deny?
I think that's highly unusual that they would.
Okay.
Highly unusual. I've never seen it, but.
If, if memory serves, don't they have two votes, one for, does this go on the warrant? Which I, I think they, I've always seen it, yes, but I've only followed more closely the past couple of years. And then there's the, oh, does the select board approve?
Make a recommendation to approve.
Yeah, yeah, make the recommendation to approve, that's it, thank you. Um, because I'm like, I had this discussion today, I'm like, they don't approve, but they recommend to approve.
And if they don't want to put it on the warrant, that's, that's their authority, so be it, but.
I, I don't think we have to stress that too much. Again, that's, it's much more so, in my experience.
Okay. But those are in, in pretty good shape and full text, that've incorporated all the, in the case of the floodplain, the DCR comments. So, and that, and look in the staff report from the last meeting, you'll see.
Mm-hmm.
The full text there. Same with the ADU by law.
Yep. So I'm going back and reviewing, we have ADU first, right? I'm looking at eight accessory dwelling units in the staff report.
Now that we're talking about zoning articles, I mean, warrant articles, if, if, if the desire in town is to pursue first right or, right of first refusal for that hundred West Townsend Harbor Road, they would need to put that on the warrant as a voting article. We would need to vote as a town to come up with that money.
You mean a ballot?
It would be a, it would have to be, I think, a special town meeting.
Would it be a ballot? No, I would.
No, it's a, it's a voted.
It would be a.
Annual town meeting.
It's a voted annual town meeting to a.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Prior disposition.
So I mean, that would be the ideal expediency, but I think that it closes next week, so.
Need time to go to town meeting for.
Right, so. Anyway.
And so the town gets a certain amount of time to do that.
Yep.
And that could be expedited since there was a, a valid bona fide offer. The problem with those right of first refusals is if there's no offer, then we have to get it appraised, and that has to fit within a certain timeline.
Mm-hmm.
We have to get funded. Anyways, sorry.
Excuse me. So the ADU is pretty much, the state said this is what it has to be. And we don't have a lot of flexibility there.
They took out what we wanted to add in the way of special permit process for the additional detached unit. They took that out.
Now.
And they took out.
DCR, is that, they took, or whoever, I, I don't know all the.
DCR is, uh.
No.
Their requiring language, so I had to write up the, you know, I gave you the full explanation.
Yeah.
And now I, I have, you know, adjusted that so that it's full text, the way it should look in the bylaw.
Yep, and I'm seeing, I see that in the staff report, the strikeouts and edits and, you know, strikeouts, ads in red. But, so their feedback was we could not have a special permit for the second ADU on the property. Okay.
And we could not require the same dimensional setback as residential structures. So that they can be five feet from the lot line instead of twenty.
All the stuff we talked about was important for safety.
Let me please just mention something, DCR has nothing to do with the ADUs. DCR is the floodplain maps.
Oh, that's why I was trying.
It's executive offices.
Yeah, yeah, whichever group it is, that's why.
They're very active in reviewing and approving this.
And.
If you don't do our review and follow all our comments and incorporate them all the way that we are, are at, are telling you, then you may not be approved. And you'll drop from the, the insurance program. So.
So.
It's kind of a little nerve wracking, you know, going through and forth with them, but I've got everything in that they, they commented on.
Okay, so I'm gonna, I think we're talking about both at the same time, I'm gonna pause us.
It is, yeah.
ADUs, floodplains we'll do next, ADUs. The word, whatever org it is at the state, whatever alphabet soup group it is at the state, the wording we have now, they said you can't, you, you can't have the addition, the residential setback. They said we can't have a special permit for the second ADU.
Yeah.
Correct? Okay. So basically, we have to do as listed without, okay. Great, so we've got the wording in front of us. It is not all the coverage I would have liked, but the coverage I would have liked, we apparently can't do. Do we have other thoughts on this before it goes? And again, there's some concerns about whether or not these changes keep it in the four corners, but that's ultimately, that's for the lawyers to decide, that's not for us. We can put it forward, and if they say it doesn't work, all we can, I mean, we can't put forward much different at this point.
Yeah, there'll be a town council review of the preliminary warrant.
Yeah.
Right, there should be, talking a lot about that, but there will be. And, and then you have your public hearing for your recommendation. So there's still weights at the apple, but this is kind of, this is what's going on warrant, so.
Okay.
And cleaned up language.
All right, do we have other thoughts or questions about the ADU?
Only logistically at town meeting, because if, if this is so strongly driven by the state's model, then we have to be careful and we have to be, we have to think of potential on the floor amendments, and, and also, are they even valid?
I think that is why we're gonna be very grateful that town council will be at the meeting, as they are every time.
Okay.
And town council is active in kind of looking and going.
Good point.
Yes or no?
Yep.
I agree with the concern. And I think it's important to bring up, and thank you for bringing it up, because I think that's something we have to. If amendments are brought up, we need to then proactively communicate. Hey, I hear you want to do an amendment, I'm not saying no, obviously, but here's something to be aware of. And then town council's there to actually give the real opinion.
I guess even if it, well, go ahead.
No, I was just gonna say, I think if, if we're gonna have like public hearings on the.
Yeah.
Yes, I mean, we need to be abundantly clear that this is, as we've stated before, mandated by the state, and that we cannot, you know, put in the things that, like, we have tried to put in. So we just, as we do the, you know, comments like tonight and previous, previous meetings, as well as the, the open hearings, just be abundantly clear of where this came from, which is, you know, an important part of the process, and that this is not sponsored by us, created by us, it is from the state.
Yeah, if that, assuming I presented at town meeting like I usually do, that is, though, I intend to be clear, we are here, here is the bylaw, this is mandated by the state.
Right.
Meaning a knee, sure, is it what we want it to be? Maybe not, regardless, our hands are largely tied in what we can do to flex here. All right. So it sounds like we're done on the ADUs. I'll move us over to the floodplains, I think we're gonna have a very similar discussion about the floodplains. Again, because that's.
Well, there, the, the consequence is you don't get something that is a benefit to the town.
Yeah.
Resident. Unless you do it our way and add all this language in your bylaw, you will not participate in the, in the insurance, national insurance flood program.
That, this is us playing ball so that we have access to this insurance.
Now, did they provide a number of how many houses actually were going to be affected by this? Seems like it wasn't a large number.
They gave, yeah, it wasn't.
No.
They gave us like.
Like ten or something?
It's twenty?
Twenty. I'm just wondering if those, those, those residents could be notified, so that's, you know, they're not learning of it on town meeting floor, or, you know, like if we were proactive and just giving them a heads up, if we have that information.
Yeah, I'll, I'll see if I can get that.
Thank you.
Well, they must have.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Maybe they could be notified for the public hearing.
That would be great.
Yeah, that makes sense.
That I can do, yeah.
Okay.
Love it.
As I do recall, it was less, something less than twenty.
Yep. And being real, this isn't, there are changes, but again, this isn't, as much as we very understandably, because I, I poked fun earlier, but I, I think, you know, I, I share. share 90-plus percent of the sentiment, sentiment of frustration with things coming down from on high. By the same token, this is largely a data-driven change. So, between the mapping, catching things up. So, do we have other thoughts on the floodplains? All right. I don't hear any. I think we're good. Chris, I will swing by the office tomorrow morning if you want, and we can see if you want me to come and help present these. I'm happy to at the Select Board. If you don't, I don't have to. We can--
Yeah, that might be fun.
So we can touch, touch base tomorrow morning. I'll swing by.
Thank you.
Let me just double check before, I'm like, tomorrow morning? Yeah, tomorrow morning's totally cool. Great.
Yeah, great.
And then I'll hop on a call with you at noon, so we'll see a lot of each other.
Thank you.
Love it. All right. Moving us on to abutting community notices. I think Logan said there wasn't anything, so. Committee reports. Master Plan Steering Committee.
We had a meeting. So there are a couple things. We discussed the current outline of what Overunder has provided in terms of where they think the town's priorities are, what those things cost, what they recommend. We don't have anything like a complete draft at this point. The board wants to, this is where I drop the ball, I haven't reached out to the Finance Committee yet. The board would like to reinstate the Finance Committee seat. They think that's going to be really important on discussing some of these things. So that is on me to reach out to that committee and verify that they have somebody who's willing to fill that position. And then, once that's happened, we can reinstate the position and add them on. Additionally, the board is pretty dissatisfied with the third public outreach meeting that occurred--
Mm-hmm.
--which I don't blame them. I think one member of the public and three members of the board showed up. And they would like to discuss with Overunder the possibility of having a new public outreach meeting.
I could, I can, I have all the materials for that.
Okay.
And am capable of, I mean, if Overunder can be there, great, but I'm capable of running that, I have all the materials to run that meeting.
Okay.
And was therefore, I'm, I'm capable of--
Yeah.
Of doing footwork there as needed.
Okay.
Like work, whatever it's called.
The other main thing, the appointment that we already went through today. There is an additional desire for the board to reach out to kind of all of our town boards and committees, to have them, not in official capacity, but have them send somebody to a meeting to outline what, sorry, outreach to all of the standing boards and committees in the town, to have them look over the document that we were given by Overunder, and send somebody to our meeting in a kind of unofficial capacity, and to say, this is what we like, this is what we don't, this is what we think, so that we can get a more broad stroke of what the different boards and committees of the town think, without having to tie us up when it comes to necessitating people for quorum. We have what I think will be a pretty good system in place for making sure that we can achieve quorum and we can have meetings. We successfully reorganized the board. I was made chair, and Jerry Reed took on the position of secretary. We do not have a vice chair, but somebody has expressed potential interest. And I think that about covers everything.
Great. And there's the, okay, yep, great. And there's the biweekly meeting tomorrow as well, and--
Yep.
The town manager will be there, so, super duper. Okay. Open Space Committee has not met. Sorry, I shall let you say--
Yeah, no, previous statements.
Municipal Building Design Committee.
We had a meeting. It was, it was not, in my opinion, real super productive. The chair wasn't available, and Mr. Blatt ran the meeting, and he hasn't been at a lot of the meetings. So it was not necessarily the most productive meeting, but we should be meeting again this coming one month, a week from tonight.
All right. Excellent. Capital Planning Committee has not met. Economic Development Committee--
Hasn't met since last--
Stormwater Task Force--
We haven't met since the last meeting.
All right. Montezoset Regional Planning Commission.
We did meet, unlike everybody else. I don't have my notes. We had an auditor there, very exciting. We also had State Senator Eldridge there talking about Neshoba Valley, kind of the same thing that they said before. Neshoba Valley is closed, closed. I didn't know that there were 600 jobs that were lost when it closed. That, that's a staggering amount of people, 600 jobs lost. He did mention that, of course, they're, you know, they're writing letters to the governor and to whoever who will hear them about, you know, the hospital desert we have here, the healthcare desert that has occurred with the closing of Neshoba Valley. He did say that UMass has an interest in building a standalone emergency center. Some people said maybe in Devon, some people said maybe in AER. There's talks about where they'll put it, but there is interest in it. I, I heard like a $9 million investment. I could be wrong, I could be remembering wrong. But again, that's all, you know, just being discussed, no concrete plans.
If only there was a building somewhere that was well-equipped to function as a healthcare facility.
I don't know how you close a building and nine months later, it's not up to code to be a hospital. That makes no sense to me. So was it not up to code nine months before when it closed? Maybe.
Yeah, well, that's, I mean, it's different, but similar, that's kind of Turkey Hill, right? Like, we've got a school that you're allowed to use, even though it doesn't meet current ADA standards, but you do too much work, or if there was a change, like if we stopped using it and went back, I don't know if that would officially be in that case, but you can trigger, like, the same as, like, too much work at Turkey Hill could trigger, now you have to bring everything up--
Like a grandfather clause.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I don't know. Montezoset Joint Transportation Committee.
We did not meet. We'll meet this week.
Okay. We've got minutes approval for our meetings on February 19th from the site visit and the 24th. And I don't think, I didn't see those in the SharePoint. Did I, or did I just--
I didn't see them.
My apologies. Let me add those right now.
The 14th--
Yeah.
What is that, April holiday? Must be late this year.
Patriots' Day, but that's not the 14th.
Tax Day.
What is it, 21st? It must be late.
17, it's Marathon Day.
Patriots are on the 15th.
All, all I have on my calendar, the 14th is a holiday. All I have on my calendar is that my oldest has banned, and my mother's--
Patriots' Day on the 21st, it must be. She was late for it.
15.
It's the 15th?
No, 15 is tax.
Yeah.
14, yeah, 14, I think, is Patriots' Day, which is Marathon Day. 14 sounds right.
Patriots' Day is the 21st.
Oh.
I mean, so say it's Senor Google.
Okay.
So.
Sorry about the delay. The minutes should be up on SharePoint.
Thank you. And-- Reloading the page. When people are ready, I will accept a motion, but not looking to rush you either.
First one's pretty short.
Yeah.
Motion to approve minutes for 219, 2025, the 494 Electric Avenue site visit.
Second.
Okay. Moves and seconded on the Electric Ave site visit. Any desire for further reading on that one or discussion? I'm getting head shakes of no. So all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. And the other would be for the 24th, once people are ready.
Motion to approve minutes for February 24th, 2025.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any need for further reading or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great. Those are done. Meeting schedule. We meet, all of our meetings are here at Town Hall in the upstairs meeting room, unless otherwise noted. Upcoming meetings include March 24th and then February 14th. No, we don't go back in time. We go forward in time. April 14th. And public comment. There is no public in the room. There is no public in Zoom. Board comment concerns. Seeing none. I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Moves and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Thank you, friends, for another exciting evening. Have a wonderful time, and we'll see you in a couple weeks.